I am calling the meeting to order. Kind of in different words, and we'll stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, the real call, please.
Patrick G. Bredow.
Here.
Patrick Bronn. Patrick Solin. Here. Kelly Bassberger.
Here.
Brenda Jinsky. Clay.
I'm here.
And Danny.
Yes, I'm here, Paul.
And Danny's always at these meetings.
Okay.
Okay. We are going to go to number two and get A and have our budget update. So I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Okay. So this is our monthly budget update. And I did print up a little bit of a larger one that is located at the bottom of the sheet that you already have on the top of it, summary sheet. But just as a background, this plays a vital role in our district for the following reasons. One is transparency, alignment with our goals, resource allocation, compliance, accountability, community engagement, obviously, our long-term planning, and fiscal sustainability. There is details within there for each of those sections. And regular board, our budget updates are an integral part to our district's financial success and achievement of our educational mission. So this category is just an informational piece. And if you take a look at either the handout that I gave you or the bottom of the budget summary sheet, this is the same format as we followed last month with, on the left side, you'll see everything for the prior year. So you'll see the year-to-date, the prior-year actual, and then the year-to-date percent of the actual. So one of the differences that I'd like to point out to you is that state, on the very second line, you'll see that the prior, on the very far left, is 2,362,459. And you'll see that that current year-to-date is much less at about 2,000. So one of the things with our school finance schedule is that revenues come in at different times. So that's pretty typical, that you'll see sometimes quite a large difference in when that is, depending on when our state aid is coming in or federal aid, things like that. So you'll notice the same thing with the federal piece. We have much more coming in at this time for the current year-to-date than we had last year at this time. And that comes with claims or the different pieces that you, you know, the schedules of when you claim different reimbursements from DPI. But in looking at the health of our budget, it's being projected to be right on to where it's budgeted in the working budget, which we'll talk more about as that was a preliminary. But once we go to that annual meeting in October, we'll have the actual numbers from DPI as to what our aid is going to be.
Any questions for Kelly?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to B, summer school.
Okay. So this is a pretty standard agenda topic each year. And the purpose is, again, just informational. So we report to DPI the instructional minutes of student enrollment in summer and interim sessions. So generally, the minutes of instruction for resident students enrolled in eligible courses are divided by 48,600 to calculate what an FTE, or full-time equivalency, for summer membership. And that all calculates into the revenue limit, and DPI uses it for stated purposes. So when you look at the numbers from last year, you'll see, I put it there where summer was FT equivalent to 27, so then 40% of that is 11. So that would go into our state aid as 11 FTE. So moving to the bottom, when you look at our current years, I put last year's and the current year's reports that we submit to DPI kind of side by side, so that you'd be able to tell the difference. But in summary, the number of resident students entering 4K through 12 that participated in summer interim session classes increased from last year to this year from 563 to 590. So when you look at the total resident pupil minutes, that averages from last year to about 27.1896 FTE, and this year it averages to 27.94. And you'll see in October, when we look at our stating calculation, you'll see where that is put into additional revenue for our district. So the more summer school minutes we have, the better it is for our revenue and for our children. So that's just a summary of these two documents that you see here. These are just the actual reports that we send to DPI. So they're staying pretty stable with that. Is there any questions on that?
So the jump in FTEs, what was last year's?
11. So this year will be about the same.
Okay.
Because it was, last year's was averaged when you divide it by the number of...
People.
Yeah. When you divide it by the number of minutes, which is that 48,600, that will be the full-time equivalency. So you can see the number of difference. It's not much. Last year was 27.18. This year it's 27.94. So they'll average it up to 28.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
All right. So in your third Friday? Oh, sorry.
Is that where you want to go?
Is that where, what, the next one?
If you were done with that.
Yes, I was.
Then we're ready for Third Friday Count.
Okay. So Third Friday Count is another one of those reports that's due in October to our state. And it is an annual event in which we officially count our students enrolled in our public schools. And this count is very critical because of several reasons. So one, it determines our state funding for our district. It obviously guides resource allocation and staffing. It measures accountability and educational effectiveness. It is very crucial in our long-term planning and decisions. And then it also ensures compliance with regulations and eligibility for programs. So this is a crucial process for our fair funding, efficient school management, accountability, and informed decision-making. The report that's required is the PI 1563, and that collects a majority of information that's related to counting children for state formula purposes. So it's a pretty complex process that we just went through. And I put the different budget fiscal impacts that we have. And what we just discussed is, it obviously determines our per pupil funding is in our weighted funding formula from the state, which is very complex and involves a various amount of components, including both general and categorical aids. It also determines our annual budget allocation, which once this is all put into the state aid formula, that's in mid-October, when it's going to help us identify what our aid is going to be. This also helps us be able to look at adjustments for enrollment changes, and then obviously that impact on equity. So it plays a crucial role in promoting equity and educational funding for our districts in the state. The policy impact, that would just be under that annual report, and I put the code there, which is 8145, and it's linked in there for you if you'd like to review it. I put just a snip of what last year's and this year's is, so you can look by grade, meaning preschool, special ed, 4K, which we are in the 524.5 hours section, and then the five full-day year-round kindergarten. And then it compiled the grades 1 through 12 altogether. So you can see, last year's was 1,885 for grades 1 through 12, and 1844 for the year before. And what that is, including the 4K preschool and five-year-old kindergarten. Last year, it's about 2.47% difference. We're down 53 children in our count. And you can see the breakout there of 41 at 1 through 12. We're down 26 at five-year-old kindergarten. We are up 15 in 4K, which is a good thing. And then we are down in the preschool special education department.
Have a hard copy.
Yeah.
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 Any questions for Kelly?
Kelly, did you, by chance, I know in the past, we've always gotten a copy of where the students are open-enrolled out.
Yes. Yep.
Is that possible that we can have that attachment for the board meeting, so all the board members can see that?
Yes.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
Yep. I do have that report, and I can get that to you based on where they went.
Because I know there's always been questions in the past from board members as to, it's interesting to see where all the children are going to and where they're coming from for the open enrollment coming in.
Yes. Yes.
Anything else? So now we're at D, enrollment projections.
Yes. So when we're thinking about enrollment projections, just the background on this would be, just as Third Friday Count or our summer school, these are very crucial for school financing for budgeting for the following reasons. An obvious one is the resource allocation. So this number really helps us determine what the number of students that are expected, which directly impacts our staffing, classroom space, materials, and facilities, all of which have financial implications. Budget planning, so the projections provided provide the foundation for developing an accurate budget and helping us to ensure that our resources are allocated effectively to meet the educational needs of our students. This also impacts how we determine staffing levels, so how we're going to determine what the appropriate number of teachers and support staff are to avoid over-staffing or under-staffing. Facility needs, so we're looking at the projections to inform our facility planning, helping the district assess whether new construction, renovations, or closures are necessary. This also is important because of our funding allocation. So obviously, many of our funding formulas are enrollment-based, so we need accurate projections to ensure that we receive the correct amount of state and federal funding. Program offerings, projections also impact our curriculum planning and our provision of specialized programming and programs, which influence the budget allocation for our educational services. Financial stability, so looking at these enrollment projections helps support our financial stability, preventing budget shortfalls or surpluses. And then obviously, compliance. So we're using these to ensure regulatory reporting, maintaining compliance with our educational requirements and eligibility for our programs and grants. So when you're looking at the fiscal impact, this, the fiscal impact of enrollment on our district can vary for, depending on several factors, which is the total number of students, the exchange of enrollment, the district's funding formula, and then the cost structure of our district. So I put there some ways in which enrollment can affect the district's finances, just for your own information. The revenue impact is obviously our state and federal funding, and then our local property taxes. And then our expenditure impact would be those staffing costs, resource allocations, and facility costs. As far as the impacts on our financial planning and budgeting, this is going to be critical in how we're going to adjust the budget moving forward based on what we're projecting based on historical data. And then obviously, our long-term planning, which is those facility plannings, which, you know, impacts where we're going to accommodate our expected student populations. So what we did for a budget projection is we looked at the FTE, which is the full-time equivalency membership for our revenue limit calculations. And what it looks at is that actual enrollment, which you'll see there from 2018 to 2023. And you can see that from 1819 to 1920, we had a decrease of 3.91%. Actual decrease from 2020 to 20, or 1920 to 2021 was down 6%. And then from 2021 to 2022, we were up 2%. And then again, from 2122 to 2223, we were down 0.75%. And then we continue to see a decrease this year from last year to 2.9%. So when you're looking at budget projections, you can see that the trend is declining. Next year, it's projected to go down 2.45, and then continue to decrease another 3.6, and then decrease 1.81, 1.95, and then looking at a projected enrollment from 27, 28, 28, 29, down 3.28%. But when thinking about these pieces, these are obviously projections. So when we're thinking about the curricular changes that we're making, the changes in student achievement that will be coming, thinking about how we maintain or develop our facilities, and thinking about the culture shifts that we are going to be working on, I would anticipate that projection, you know, would increase if we can make some significant changes. But if we continue things the way that they are moving, this is where the projections are coming out as to where they would be. Is there any questions on that piece before we move to the open enrollment expenses and revenue?
No. We're good.
Okay. So at the bottom, you'll look at what our expenses have been from 2019 to 2024. So without going through each year, you can see that our open enrollment expenses have increased from 2019 at 943,378 to the current year of 1,574,375. So a significant increase in our expenses for open enrollment.
Does that include the voucher program?
It does not include the voucher program.
In, okay.
Mm-hmm. Which is also anticipated to be increasing in expenses. So when we're looking at the revenue coming in, we started in 2019 at 215,354, and that has increased to 409,561 this current year. But as you can see, our expenses greatly outweigh our revenue. So all the more reason that falls directly in line with the decrease in our enrollment. So all the more reasons why the changes that we're making, we need to attract and retain our students and their families. Are there any questions on that?
Well, we know where open enrollment is, and it's not good. We have to get those people back.
Yes, we do.
Any other questions on that? Is that everything with D then, Kelly?
Yes, I am done with my portion.
Okay. Hang around though, please.
I will. I just didn't know you had to come up. How not?
So we'll move to E, which is new hires and resignations.
And that's just, as in the past, a spreadsheet of all staff that have been hired. The first one, these are all new hires.
Transfer, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yep, these are all.
Wow, we had 13 applicants for that one position? That was amazing.
Yes. We did a variety of different ways of reaching out, using social media, Indeed, and WeCan, which is a little bit different than we had done in the past as far as just going on WeCan, and especially for these business-type of positions, you really are, you're really able to reach those accounting and accounts payable experts. So we've got some very good candidates, and through the interview process, even ginger really, we're an exciting hire to join us.
Can I ask a question?
Since you.
Thanks.
Well, I have, I have the ability to say no.
Oh, I know. It is perfect. Yeah. So I have two questions. Mr. Holder is asking that education portion. Do we know what that is?
Did what? Can I see yours? I can't, I'm not signed in, and I never see anything. That's why I'm taking a hard copy. No, yet. I have my board agenda, the agenda, I just, I can't see this.
What are your questions? Would it be possible to come to the board?
Correct.
Would it be possible to have that added?
We sure can.
Yeah. And then I thought, if I'm wrong, I thought I remember just having a discussion about having transfers included on this, or I'm not sure how, I thought we talked about it, but I don't remember well.
We did.
So for me, I don't know that information, so we'll need that person to be putting this together, so I thought we want to handle transfers at one time. I know they were not ever on there.
Right.
But I don't know when it was discussed, because I wasn't part of that, but we can definitely start adding that.
Okay.
We'll see.
But it's just, yeah, I don't have that access to that information on who's transferring where.
Okay.
But, so somebody could send me that information.
It could be added before the board meeting, you know, the third Monday.
Yeah.
I was just going to refer back to that policy. I know we're going to look at it in just a moment of the transfer. Well, as we look at it, we'll see what the policy says about the transfer and the assignments.
Okay.
Yep.
But is it will be added on?
For this time, it should be. Anything else on the new hires and resignations? Okay, we'll move on to F, Policy 3120, employment of professional staff.
So this was brought up at our last committee meeting. Angie, I'm looking at you, because it was a policy and personnel.
Okay.
Remember, before we changed.
Yes.
And there were recommended, there was a recommendation that we revisited because this wasn't current practice, and that one of two things needed to happen. It needed, it needed to either be changed, or the practice needed to be followed. So, and that's for both of this policy and I believe the next one, Ezra.
3130, yes.
So they were sent back for revisiting.
Do you have any thoughts?
Revisiting.
If you have, I want you to go first.
I read through this yesterday, and my only thought was, so it's the fifth line down, teachers may only be employed by contract, and full-time teachers may only be employed following majority vote of the full membership of the board. I don't know how Bobby feels about this, but my thought was that I don't think that the board needs to vote on every single teacher, whether or not we approve them or not. So I would be fine with revising that. For the directors, yes, I would definitely like that to go to the board approval. But as far as teachers, support staff, I don't feel we need to vote on those. That was my own thought.
Well, my thought is that we've had our, school attorney talked to us as a board one time about the 30,000-foot level and the 5,000-foot level. And it's best for a board to be at the 30. And when there are issues within the district, boards tend to come down heading toward that, toward that 5,000-foot level. And these two policies were changed, I believe, in April of last year, when the school board changed.
Actually, they were changed in October of last year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyway, we, when these were changed, we were probably in that 10,000 to 5,000-foot range, and my feeling is we need to get back to the 30. So I'm willing to vote to go back to the previous policies that we changed in October. So that's where I'm at.
All right. So if, if I can direct you to go to last year, October 22, policy meeting, committee meeting, you will see the previous policy there in that attachment. October 2022, policy committee meeting, and you can see the policy before it was changed, and it actually came into, this policy was retired November 28 of 2022, and the current policy came into effect that same day at that board meeting. Does that make sense? So just to help you, Catherine, because I know you wasn't a board member last year at that, during that process. That line that you are, that you are questioning was not part of the original Neola policy that was retired in November of 2022.
Okay.
It was presented in October, and it was read for first reading in October, read for second reading in November, and was retired in November of '22.
Okay.
And then what I'm hearing, Dave, is you are proposing to go back to the Neola policy prior to the revision.
Correct.
Does that make sense, Michelle?
Yes.
Glad you got it.
So I'm, Patrick Gayparto was proposing to go back to the old policy. What was your, were you thinking the same, or?
I was thinking the same thing, yes.
That's what I was thinking, but I don't want to assume.
The revision date, April, that one, is like the current policy.
Where?
And we're in the corporate agenda. My revision was, I'm 21 and retired November 28 of '22.
Right. It was revised in '21 with Neola, with their one-time change of all their policies. And then we looked at it in '22 of October, and made a first read and second read, October, November, and it was, this one was retired.
Retired.
So what I'm hearing is, this committee's wanting to present to the board this retired policy of 3120 back to the board for first reading in this month, correct?
That's where I'm at, and I'm also there with 3130, which comes up next.
So Michelle, what, what will happen is, at the end of the month, 3130, or 3140, I'm sorry.
3120.
Yeah, 3120, employment of professional staff revision. We'll come back to the board for our first reading.
Okay.
In the way that it states there. And I can show you how to strike what's current, and then add in the language from the rev- and then add in the language from the reva, from the retired policy. So that way, all the board members are seeing what this, this committee is asking to be stricken and what this committee is asking to be put back in place or put in place.
Yes. This one out to there that I can actually do that, so.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I see like it's in red and in green, so I mean, the red was taken out and the red was added.
Yes. So if you go back to that same one from the green, that's what's going to be stricken.
And the, and what? The red is going to be brought back in.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
So are we done talking about 3120? Guess so. We'll move on to G, 3130, and my, I have the same thoughts.
And it's the same discussion that that was done in October of 2022 with that same policy.
Everybody okay? Okay. H, Replacing the District Wireless Access Points, WAPS.
And as you see, there is a topic summary sheet attached to here by Mr. Kautsa with his bids and the financial breakdown of the purchases. And he is also available for further questions.
Mark, I always give you an opportunity to talk. If you want, if you would like.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here to answer questions, but I mean, you can see what the bid is. I mean, this is E-rate, so this was all the bidding and everything was done back in January. I mean, we have so many days to get the bids in the E-rate and it's, I hate to hell that to be back by. So I'm just getting to the point where now we want to order them. So I'm getting, running by everything that's going to happen at the E-rate for this funding year '23. You can see the winning bid, 51, 153, 5530, that's what's left on our E-rate balance for category two, which leaves a balance of 78,719,70.
I've seen that.
We've spent plenty of.
Financial breakdown.
Esser funds for those, but that remained 78,719,70.
And that is still within the Esser Fund budget?
Yes, that's okay, we had that.
It was our allocator.
When we were writing a three-year plan, it was part of it.
Okay, so for the public listening, it's being paid out of Esser Funds, a price of $129,875. There's a, and then our Esser Fund remainder for this type of things that we need to buy is $78,719.70. I was just ready to say, are there any questions, but you got the floor, Angie.
So, remind me, did this go to building and grounds in the past?
It's not, none of the electronics are involved in buildings in the past.
Went to finance. In the past.
Okay. Well, okay.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean this, you know, if building and grounds wanted to hear the same thing, they could, but you're here.
Right. But I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
It all ties together.
Right. And we've talked about building and grounds many times are going to have finance issues that probably are going to come here first or in some cases, they might go to you first and then come to us, but.
Right, okay. And I looked on our agenda and this is not on, so I just have a couple more questions. So this is for cameras, is that?
No, access points is the, is the actual units in each classroom that allows network connection wireless, it's a wireless access point.
Okay.
So it's a wireless connection in each classroom that allows students and staff to connect to the network and on the internet.
Okay. So then are there new cables that would be ran as well or?
No, we do not have to wait any cables being run, they're just going to replace what's there.
Okay. So the old, whatever's attached will be taken out of them?
Yeah.
Because that can be the multiple.
Right, that's one right there.
Okay.
That's what's going to get replaced, it's just that box that's on the sequence.
And it's just updating those boxes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Right, that's all I wanted to know.
I see where you see that camera though, Angie, because it's, it's one of the links that says camera.
Camera corner.
Yeah, that's just the company's name.
Yeah.
Okay, any, excuse me, any other questions about this one? Okay, we'll have that on the agenda. And I, Door Access Upgrade, FOBs.
Okay, and again, there's an attached topic summary sheet with some additional background information that Mr. Kautsa has prepared. And he also has attached his bid and bid comparison as well.
Mark, which school is this going to be? We're talking doors so that people can't get through.
Correct, anywhere where there's FOB, but it's district-wide, it's not just one building. This will cover every single door that's being handled by a FOB access right now. And that'll all, again, be all updated to something that's quite a bit less complicated and much easier to use.
Okay.
It's going to tie into, hopefully, if we go with that bid that I'm requesting, it'll tie right into our security camera system and everything. So it will be a one-stop shop for us to see the doors, the cameras and everything.
Great. Angie.
Thanks, I'm sorry. So well.
Did you used to be on this committee? Oh, I thought so.
When we're talking about doors, you were saying it's just a FOB piece that could be used.
Yes, yeah, electronics actually handles the FOB connection that opens the door.
Okay. Would it be possible to, I know it in the bids, but like the doors like on the shop, the garden room shop, you have the overhead doors that go off or else you have the service door, there's no way for people to see who's on the other side of that? So like the deliveries are coming in, you know, there's knock on the door, you don't know who's knocking, is it the delivery guy or is it somebody else? So is it possible to, camera system or?
The, the solution that that guy has been asking for a couple of years and I have pricing on this, no money to do so, is open doors within the overhead doors.
Okay.
That will let indoor lighting, which would make a better learning environment. And it will allow them to see all for that exact reason. That, that would be the most logical way. I mean, you put into a camera system, but I think a window would be dual purpose.
Right.
Okay, based on that question, Mark, you know, we have extra money, I saw $78,000 out of Esser that you have left. Is that already designated?
That's what I'm spending out of Esser, that's not what's left. That last bid.
Okay.
That, that's 78, that's what I'll be spending from Esser, not what's left in Esser.
Okay.
There's much more than that in Esser, I'm sure, but county can answer that.
Okay. So if we, and we have a deadline on Esser, correct?
We do.
Okay.
And they're going to be very strategic with how we spend that.
Okay. So just a thought, if Angie's concerned, they, and he has a bid, I'm sure the shops would like it for safety reasons. I'm thinking it's something we should look at. And if we can find the funds to do it, that's, seems like something for safety for our kids and for our people who work here. So if we can come up with the money to do that, I think that would be a good thing. Anything else on door access upgrade for the FOBs? Okay, hearing none, anything else for the good of the order?
I just want to make sure that Michelle has exactly what is being presented to the board from this committee. If you'll let us know what is being pushed forward out of this list.
Okay. So any of these, so that's why I like these new sheets, because if it's an action item, then all action items go back. A lot of this was informational, but of course, the, well, the new hires goes to the board for.
So you're basically looking at F?
Yep.
G, H?
And I.
And I. All have to go on to the agenda.
And an additional.
An additional with E.
In addition, I'll have E.
Oh, yeah, and E, sorry.
That'll be, that's always.
The report from where each open enrollment out and in is going.
I have that, the attendance of where students are coming in and coming out. And we are adding a transfer, is that correct? Or we're talking about it?
If you looked at the 3130 policy, nowhere in the policy does it say the transfers are brought to the board.
Okay.
Now.
Don't need to add that.
No, no, according to the policy, it is not part.
And then, yeah, that's it. And then here, these topic sheets are going to be nice because it's going to say action, action will always go.
Correct.
So are you saying that, sorry, that we're not going to know what the transfers?
No, because according to the policy, it doesn't come to the board. It's done by, the district administrators should be responsible for proper assignment, transfer of all professional staff members and shall attempt to affect the optimum assignment of the professional staff in conformance with any applicable contractual or legal requirements and certification requirements. There's, there's no verbiage or language in there that says that transfer and assignments come to the board.
Come to the board or could it be for disinformation, like?
That could be an item of discussion that could be added, absolutely.
For, for meeting, is that what you're saying?
It could be for board, yeah. Well, that would be.
Because if you wanted to add it as.
That would be requiring us to change the policy.
Right, so that would have to come from this committee.
Right here, yeah.
So. Would it be more efficient to have that discussion now?
Ah, that's up to this committee.
And Dave's saying no because we've already discussed those items.
Okay.
No birthday present on that one. No, I'm teasing, yeah.
Confused for Michelle's sake now, because like, didn't they just say that? But then I think he must be looking, then we went over the policies, I think that's where that came in, but I don't have access to that information, so that's why, I was saying, that's why I was kind of questioning it again and again, like, am I supposed to? Oh, that's fine, because I was, I was like.
And we can talk about it later. I mean, in the board meeting, as we're talking policy.
Yeah.
We're just bringing something back and if board members certainly can make amendments. Okay. With that, I'm going to call the meeting closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We got two out of three, so it's closed.
All right. Okay, all right, well, then we'll call the meeting in order.
You don't have to do the pledge again because it's done once.
We don't have to? Oh, we don't have to? Oh, I thought.
Change that, good.
Oh. Okay. Okay, roll call. Angie Schreger.
Here.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
JD Schrader. Jake Legerman.
Here.
Linda Wajinski.
Here.
And Danny Pye.
Here.
So you need to.
I'd like to ask that we move item D, the middle school windows.
Okay.
First, just in interest of time for Kelly, she wants to speak to that and then she can.
Okay.
With her.
Yeah.
Instead of having to wait until the rest of it.
Yeah, we can.
You move it up.
Here she goes. All right, so this is the window project. Update. So did you want to start or would you like me to start?
It's up to you.
All right, so just a window update from the financial side of things is in looking at the budget, this was allocated in a variety of different places, but not necessarily the entire amount was not allocated in Esser III. So in looking at the different federal guidelines and things for construction projects, we really have to be strategic as to what we put into Esser and how we look at funds in AGR, in title funds, in state grants, in, in conjunction with Esser III to open up general fund for the window project. And then utilizing Fund 46 if necessary, and then thinking about that grant that's coming through that we need to write yet in March.
No, January, yep.
Okay, and so one of the things that we're doing right now is really digging into Esser III. What has already been put into our federal, our state wise grant system, which is where federal grant requests need to go first, then they need to be approved by DPI. Then we can come back and put, we can spend that. So we need to clean all of that up since it was not cleaned up whatsoever when we came into the office. So there was things, there are things that we need to look at and move around to make sure that we have adequate funding for it. I'm not saying we're not going to, but we need to be really strategic with all of our state and federal grants to ensure that our general fund can support our capital projects.
Okay. Now, when you, you mentioned the, the grant, I believe it's due at the end of January's. Yeah, so you don't want to start writing it in January? Okay.
There's a webinar in November.
Okay.
I watched it last year.
Yep.
I want to refresh back through it. And then I'm going to work with, certainly the city, Row One, that was ordered to them. I know Chris was, work with them, look at past ones and start on that process as soon as the form is released. And look today, I did not see the application form for '23 yet.
Okay. If you don't see it real soon, I would give them a call because it might just be sitting in somebody's computer, not, you know, uploaded. Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
We looked it up today.
Okay. And I'm sure you know, promoting other grants, that they love to see the, you know, partnerships and stuff like that. So if we can tie that in with communities, NTC, anything like that, that would definitely help. Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
So Angie will be an excellent resource.
Probably be reaching out for a little.
Okay.
With your expertise.
Yep, that's fine. Just let me know. Okay, sorry, I need to cut, yeah.
No.
Was there anything else?
No, I just wanted to reiterate that it's not that we're not moving forward, but that you just want to be really strategic with where it comes from. And that all of the federal grants are being utilized. Because in the past, they haven't. And so we need to make sure that we're putting salaries where they need to be to expend our, our grants in the way that best fits supporting our general fund, to best support where taxpayer money is being used to align with our 10-year capital projects plan.
Right, and I, I think the point of what she's saying, just so that we all understand, is that the, the intent of finance for this was kind of a three-place, right? First, we were going to use Fund 46, then use Esser, and then use the grant if we got it. Right, so what she's saying is that it may be more strategic for us to use Fund P to pay for this project versus Esser, use Esser for other things.
And to ensure we have the money before we commit to, I mean, it's not that we're not committing to it, but we need to make sure that we have the money. And we can't just rely on if we get a million dollar grant.
Right.
And then later be like, oh, we didn't get the grant.
Yeah.
So that is something that I feel very strongly about is making sure that we have all of that allocated and organized before we start committing to several million dollars.
How much is coming out?
How much is coming out of S R?
Currently, right now, it is allocated, I think, for $600,050, but we need to, we need to look at that, because that doesn't cover the amount of the project, when you look at Fund 46 and S R 3. There is also several federal guidelines that need to be attached to any type of capital project improvements when you think about S R 3. So when looking at how we can use S R 3 grants to move different salaries, or to move different pieces that were already paying out of the general fund, that align with the requirements and the federal guidelines for S R 3, then that would free up money in general fund to be able to use the capital equipment, I mean, capital improvement project coming out of the general fund, rather than in S R 3. So basically, we have to go through and look at all staffing and determine how they're paid, and then see who needs to be placed where, so that we can make sure we're leveraging all of our federal dollars, all of our grants, and S R, to then take general fund to support this. To ensure that we don't have a million dollar gap either. Yes. Like, we want to make sure we have the money in general fund prior to signing the contracts, rather than saying, well, we're just going to hope we get a million dollar grants. We think we can. And that's just risky.
Right.
Yeah. So we really want to be solid in making sure that we have that room in general fund before we move forward. So, some of the things that we're doing with S R 3, like she said, going through and looking at salaries, who needs to be paid where, what, what was the original plan, because there's not really a detailed plan of, of what was to come out of there, there might be general topics, but it doesn't align with people's names, or really specific curricular invoices, so there's a lot of digging, finding, and trying to put the pieces together to ensure that everything's coming out of where it needs to be. And then we're obviously still getting invoices that we need to match up with where they need to go as well.
Okay.
So things are being cleaned up quite a bit.
Yeah. Any other questions for? I know you had an update as well.
Yeah, I just wanted Kelly to speak, you know, because they're kind of getting, you know, when you look at the S R work, we've been working on it for three years, and they're trying to get, and they're like, hold on.
Yeah.
They're trying to put your stuff all, and you use their knowledge and expertise to the best, and really build the best way to proceed with those funds.
Right.
So that's why I just thought that it'd be important, and they, they wanted to just make sure that everybody understood that the, the way that our previous business manager had presented it may differ a little bit than how we're going to end up.
Okay.
And it's not that that's the wrong way, that the previous admin did it, it's just that...
That was her vision and...
Well, and there's certain federal guidelines that have to come with that, and then when we have a million dollar grant, or grant that's not solid yet, I, we just didn't feel comfortable moving forward until we had all those guaranteed funds for when we sign the contracts.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So what I did is I talked with the contractors today, and they feel that we have time to pin this down before we have to commit, especially to the door piece, right?
Okay.
Because we talked about, you know, windows are a little bit more lead time, doors are not as much, they're, they're a much smaller portion of the project, so we have a little bit of time to work on that, so, that's, that's, we'll bring it back as we keep piecing it together, but...
Yeah.
Just wanted to give you an update that we're working through it, and I think that's the way to do it.
Okay. And it's still going to be the option that we talked about in the past?
As far as either electing just the windows or the doors as well?
No, like the layout of the windows, or?
That we'll get into after.
Okay. Gotcha, okay.
Good for me.
I think so.
All right.
Once the grant is applied toward January, when is the turnaround?
No, in March.
March, April, March, June, March.
Thanks, okay.
I think they'll board, like, late March, early April.
Yeah. Yep.
And then too, when you think about that, if we have the money allocated in general fund for this project, and money has been expended, we can take that million dollars, or whatever we get from that grant, apply it to this project, and then we could, we could even take that money that we have left over in general fund, put it in 46, so that we can, we can use that for capital improvement in the future.
Right.
And still get aid.
Yep.
Just making sure we have, it just, I like to make sure.
Yes.
That we're using it the most efficient way to get the best that we can for all of our different pots of money.
Yeah. It is, and I'm glad you guys have taken that on, that initiative on, so. I, I know it's not easy, it's not an easy task, I know it.
Well, it's just one, one, so many funds speak to each other, that it's not like you can just do S R, it's, you have to look at, how can we apply different things to AGR? How can we apply different things to all the different titles, so that it's all working together, to take the most pressure off general fund.
Right, right.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Is there anything else?
You know where to find it?
Yes.
All right, so, I've been working with contractors to really pin down what this, what the details of how they're going to do this project look like, and a lot of it with timeline, and they actually came up, they're the ones who suggested that we maybe look at how we're doing the window frame itself, to give us some added benefit. So if you remember back to when we had kind of three options, you know, to pick from the design way, wise, this, this setting is very, very similar to the intent of the first option, which was the most expensive option.
And remind me what that looked like, that was the, that was the three?
And that's basically a wide open, the window is completely open.
Right.
And then we put one big storefront window in, and then the top panels would be a fake window, basically.
Okay.
So, what they said they can do is that there's actually insulated panel material that they can put in there, that will look like fake glass, but it's not glass, so we have actually more insulation, more R value in that top panel than we would have in the regular...
So it's going to be one, one window, and then another smaller, I guess, window?
Two windows.
If I remember.
One, two, let me show you.
Yeah, I can.
Sounds like they found a way to make it more energy efficient.
More energy efficient, and another big benefit is the impact that it will have on the existing finishes around the opening. It'll be a lot cleaner and look a lot better.
Yes.
Finished product, both inside and out, and there will be much less transitions for there to be potential problems for leaking, or things like that, any sort of failure in the future. And it speeds up the install. So, I mean, when we started talking about this, I'm like, okay, everything is sounding great, and I said, but what is the financial impact? And they put numbers to it, and they, they said that the expense of the materials is much more, right? To make it go bigger, basically a bigger window.
Right.
But the amount of labor that it would cost to piece in the, the finishes around the smaller window, they can save that labor, and they said that, just in the interest of time and stress on them, they're fine, they're, they said it will be a wash, it will not cost us anymore to handle.
Yeah, that is good.
Have a better efficiency, better aesthetics, shorter timeframe, and better longevity. So I, I think it's a win-win all the way around.
And they do open right for fresh air?
The, yep, the, the design is at least 50% of the windows open up, so if there's three windows in an opening, two of them will open up. If there's four, then two.
And that, that's going to upgrade the, the look of the middle school exponentially, like, it's going to make it more modernized by far.
And I can, I can send you a few of these pictures that, I probably should have attached, I'm sorry, but I can do that for the board meeting if you want, or I can just email.
Yeah, I would attach it, because I was trying to remember which, which one was one, you know, what order they put it in, was it top to bottom, or bottom to, I didn't know.
Will this go to the board meeting?
It can be, it can be your report.
No, I, I couldn't.
It can be your report.
It can be part of your...
Oh, yeah, perfect.
But I'll just give you a quick glance. And this, this building that I'm going to show you is actually a window replacement that the company that's doing ours did.
Okay.
It's at Wakefield, and you'll see that the building is very similar to our middle school.
Oh, yeah.
Michigan, Wakefield, Marina Square, yeah.
Oh, that is very similar.
And if you can see it, I mean, it looks like windows all the way up.
So the, the top panel where it's black there, is that going to be like...
It's actually an aluminum insulation panel that fits within a window frame.
Okay, so is that going to be like the fake glass there, or is it...
Kind of, but...
It's just going to be like a mirror type thing right here?
No, it won't, it won't even be mirror, it'll just be like a flat painted finish, but it'll match the frame color.
Okay, gotcha. I was thinking that it was going to look like a fake window.
So yeah, out of the, out of the three panels, the bottom two would actually be your glass that's in the room, and the top one would be an aluminum insulated panel.
Oh, that's going to look so nice.
I see, okay.
So, it'll, it'll look from, you know, driving by.
Will they be identical to that?
Looking by identical. Color, shape.
The middle row will be the same color, and the bottom row will be the same color, or ours is going to look exactly like that?
As far as like how this has a reflection on it?
Or is that just from the picture of the sun?
That's just the picture of the sun, or what that is. I saw that the bottom have the screens on it, so those are operable windows, so the, the screen is probably screwing with the reflection of the picture. It's the same glass, it's just maybe it was funny to picture.
Now, you said that you...
Or those are shades, I bet you those are shades. Because that one's all...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
I see. Oh, yes.
That one's not...
Okay, yep, yep. Don't get white shades.
So we got all that.
So I was really happy, the contractors are doing a great job, I think, hands down, it provides us better value everywhere, everywhere you look. So, I would like, let's see, in the opposition, bring it back for promotion, but I think, since it's just the adjustment to the design, a little bit of, you know, money difference, I think.
Right, just be kind of more informational, I think. I do have one question, now, you've, you've done some prep work, and how the, it was going to be laid out before, is that going to have to change now that, if we change the window style?
No.
No?
No, actually, it actually increases, one of the aesthetic features that I like about this is, some of the old sills were going to be reused, just to do the, how the, the columns were coming into the, to the openings and stuff in some of the sections, and those are actually able to get all brand new solid surfaces in there for the same long line as well.
Oh, okay, perfect, okay.
So, it, it will change a little bit, but not...
So like moving the vents around and stuff like that, that's all fine?
No, that is all fine, yep, the top panel can still accommodate everything we need to do.
Okay.
Nice.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go back up to item A, policy 7440.
I would just recommend that we don't consider the, the change and stick with the current policy.
What is the difference in these two policies, these two versions?
Basically, the changed one was a version that would allow more, more video cameras to be placed, I would say, and I think that we should just leave it as is.
Placed by who? Placed by the district, or placed by somebody else? Because this is the, this is the issue, right, that not all the video cameras are hooked to the district?
So it's, the, the highlighted policy changes were not those that were recommended by Niola. The first policy is the one that Niola recommends.
The current one.
And the second one, the se, yes, correct.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point, Angie, yes, it is the current one. The second one would allow cameras to be installed that may not be tied into the district security system.
Yeah, any questions?
Okay, so, I don't want to assume, but I would, I'm going to assume that this is stemming from when we, you know, everybody had to go to virtual learning, and like, a lot of the school districts didn't, were not set up, like, the technical colleges where they have the, was it ITVs or whatever, and so like, you couldn't have a teacher in there teaching a class, and then the kids were virtually learning. So, is, I don't know if that's where this is coming from?
No, I think these are like, there have been some cameras installed, and this has happened, like, if I'm understanding it correctly, over a period of years, like, many, many, many years, that there have been purchases through Amazon of a security camera being placed, so I'm not sure who's monitoring that.
Oh.
Purchased by who? The district or somebody else?
Someone from within the district, I'm not sure who.
So somebody used their own budget?
School funds, correct.
But their, but their budget to purchase camera?
Okay, so, like a staff couldn't go and get their own camera, and then have it hooked to their own cloud, to keep an eye on their classroom, is what you're saying?
The original one would prevent that from happening.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
So, I see we have three staff members up there, would any of you like to comment on why cameras were not hooked to the district, and do you have any opinion on whether they should be or shouldn't be?
If we're allowed to speak, I guess we can kind of fill everybody in on what is going on, and where this is coming from. So, basically, in our area, our tech head department area, there's some cameras that have been installed.
Mike, can you come down to the table, so the microphone can pick you up, please, sir?
Sure.
It's a pretty powerful mic, but I don't know if it'd get all...
So, down in the tech head area, there's some cameras that have been installed in our area, basically for safety, and theft, and some different things that have been going on. They are part of our district's network, they're not like, we're the only person that can monitor them, they're hooked up to our school network. So, IT, anybody can get in there and check them out whenever they want. Basically, they were put in place because we had a lot of things going on, students were getting injured, and an example in my area, when you have 18 or 20 kids in there, in a, in a welding booth, and those other kids are working, somebody gets hurt, something happens, so they're basically there to protect staff, students, they're not there to cause any other issues. And so they've been here since I've got here, it's not like they're new things, we've had, talked about adding some to other areas, because there's similar problems going on. So as a department, I guess it doesn't really matter to us if it's our district's security camera system that's put into those places, or if it, this is another way to go about it, but we need, we feel strongly about having these in our areas for the safety and well-being of our students and staff, because there's just so many liabilities in these industrial settings. So if somebody gets hurt, everybody's covered, so that's kind of where this, I think, is all stemming from, and there's been so much change and turnover in the district, that it's all just starting to come to light here now, as to where this is at. So, that's kind of a short synopsis of what's going on.
All right, so...
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I think one major difference though, is that our standard camera system, that, like, our IT department manages, that has all of our cameras on, that has, that's only able to be viewed by very few people within the district that have that access.
Okay.
The, the cameras that we install, that are not on that same system, are only primarily viewed by staff that are in those areas, and that don't normally have access to all of our cameras.
So you're, you're, what I'm hearing, you're saying is, it would be better to have them on our system, not just the network, but the, our, in our system?
And I want to be really clear, that my comment is just, that my comment right now is just strictly that the camera system that IT runs... IT runs should be where all cameras reside.
Mm-hmm.
Not having standalone systems that others monitor that normally don't have access to our bigger system.
Right, I agree, and I definitely agree with you with the liability and that we need to have those in place, especially, cause I mean, that's, that's just not a, a standard classroom, if you will, I mean, those are very unique-
Right.
Areas of our schools, so-
And I don't think anyone's saying we don't feel they should be there, the thing is, is that we have all these different cameras that have been purchased through Amazon or whatever, because I do know they were here before you came, before I came.
Yep.
Yeah.
But they all need to be connected to the district's system.
Right.
So, if it's that the district needs to purchase additional cameras, so that we can remove those that are currently there that our IT staff are not monitoring, then that would be something that we need to look, but right now, that's not, the policy needs to match that.
Okay.
So, Mike, how often do you monitor those cameras? How often do you look at it a lot?
The only time we ever really look at anything is when there's an issue. Otherwise, they're there, they're like a, a security, and it has improved so many things.
Daily, weekly, or monthly?
Daily, I mean, it's hourly, things have improved, you know, with the students just knowing that they're there.
No, I mean, that you look at it.
Oh, I would say it's probably, maybe, once every two months, if necessary.
So, it's not unreasonable that you would, if you wanted to look at something, you'd go down and ask?
Absolutely.
Whoever's in charge?
Typically, it's like, IT has access, building principals have access, and our SRO.
So, if something happened, obviously, an accident, you're gonna know right away, but if something is stolen or something like that, how long, on average, do you say that you've noticed it's missing?
It all depends on what it is.
Okay.
The one thing that has happened, there's, there's an issue, when I first started working here, where there was some of our Skills USA fundraises and money that went missing, well, within, like, four or five days, we realized that it was missing, and then we were able to track that down, but, I mean, usually, usually, things that go missing, you know, can usually, it's, it all depends what it is, but usually, within a week, we usually come back to it. We've had glasses broken, we've had fights break out, and when those things happen, you know, it's usually within a couple day window-
Sure.
We have to go back and look at the things, it usually isn't, you know, we have to go back two years or a year or anything like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we had, you know, we had the videos long enough.
So, as long as all cameras are getting replaced with district compatible cameras, you're good with this?
Yep, we're totally fine with that.
And you're saying, Glenda, you're saying that that's gonna happen?
No, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm saying that we need to evaluate that and see where the cameras are needed, it may very well be exactly where all those are, but I would also assume that the cameras that have been purchased, and I'm not saying he did that.
Yeah, yeah, please, no that.
But the cameras, the cameras that were purchased probably are of a lesser quality, so there may not be a need to have as many cameras there, but the security cameras would be where they're needed to be, but, the big thing is that they need to be tied into the district security system.
And we know for a fact that that, they're not compatible?
I don't know that, I mean, I would assume that there's different things going on, but we'd have to look into that.
That would be a Mark Colson question, right?
He has, he is aware of them, and, um, I think they were probably supposed to have already been removed, again, that's nothing, it just has not happened yet.
Okay.
So, this is an opportune time to figure out what it is we wanna do, if we want to keep the cameras, or if we have district purchase cameras that tie into the system, and then the policy matches that.
Okay, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to address that the current policy doesn't even allow the, the current allowance of them in the classroom or lab or anything.
Okay.
It specifically says not. And also, I just wanted to add that we use our professional development as well, we use them to improve our practice, or at least in the past, that we've reviewed, especially when we have new teachers, we can go over what happened-
Okay.
And give them pointers on how we could change that to improve the learning spirits.
Okay.
So, that has been used in the past.
Do you have, is there, do you have cameras in the, um-
Fab Lab.
Nope, the media, media tech room? That, that's this one?
Media Productions.
Yes, thank you, I'm just trying to remember the name of the classes there.
We have it in the room one forty-two-
Okay.
The media lab-
Yep.
And also, the recording studio, because from time to time, I have to leave the room-
Mm-hmm.
With students in it, in order to go up here for like, two minutes to fix an error-
Okay.
Fix a problem, when I can't reach our IT department, which happens quite often, actually.
Yeah.
So, I need to go up and physically help the students get what they need done, and then go back.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I'm, I'll just play the other side of this, I mean, I could see this being useful, not that everybody's gonna agree with doing this, but I could see this being useful in classrooms because of, you know, behavioral issues, you know, kids coming up and telling teachers off and stuff like that, you have it on camera, and so, I mean, there's no, you know, going against that, so, and I understand other reasons why you wouldn't want it in every single classroom either, you know, so, yeah.
It, it does allow the district administrator to authorize those other areas.
Where does it say that?
Yeah, I don't see-
In the existing-
Where, where are we looking at the existing one?
It was attached, uh-
The top, attached, is there?
It's the larger paragraph that starts the, the district administrator, and then go halfway down, it says, "Accept in extraordinary circumstances and with the written authorization of the district administrator, then they shall not be used in areas where people have reasonable expectation."
Of privacy.
And then, yeah, yep, and then they list, you know, locker and changing rooms.
At the bottom of that paragraph?
At the bottom, it says, "For individual classrooms during instructional time," but the beginning of that sentence allows the district administrator to allow that, but we have to have permission from.
We, we want that permission, previously, we were the impression that that couldn't be allowed because of the policy. That was the reason we wanted to change.
Okay, which, I'm, I'm still trying to find now.
What is the policy?
It's on the first big paragraph, so it's the third paragraph down from the top edge.
Yeah, okay, oh, okay.
In the middle, why it says, "Accept."
Says the district administrator.
Yeah, cause it says, "The determination of where and when to use video surveillance, electronic monitoring equipment will be made in a nondiscriminatory manner, video surveillance, electronic monitoring system, monitoring equipment may be placed in common areas in the school buildings," and it gives a long list of where they may be placed, and then it says, "Or in individual classrooms during instructional times." So, that's where Jake, you're reading, that the district administrator may put those in instructional classrooms at any time, with her-
Written authorization.
Yep, and then if you look at the bottom, under retention, storage, access to, and disposal of, uh, one, two, three, the third paragraph says, or third sentence says, "Access to and viewing of video recordings is limited to authorized personnel, the building principal shall approve requests for access to recorded and stored video images, the administrator may authorize the viewing of recorded images and the ongoing law enforcement investigation, so on." So, that gives the, uh, the building principal the authority to say, Andy Mary's teaching XYZ class, and he can look at this particular video, but other than that, the teachers are not allowed to see any of those videos, just at, at a whim, like you are now. I mean, what you're doing now is actually against this written policy here.
Well, and it also says that the board, the board will not place video surveillance, electronic monitoring equipment for the purpose of obtaining information, for the purpose of routine staff appraisal evaluations or monitoring.
Exactly.
So, um, yeah, no, it shouldn't be, but-
So, for professional development, according to the policy, it shouldn't be used for that.
Right, that's what I was thinking, that's what that says.
Because, honestly, I, now I don't know this, this is where Glenda can school me on this, is the principal should be in person evaluating the teacher of that building.
Yeah, this is more of in our own area, so as our team, we have an issue, then the veteran teachers can look at said video clip and say, "Well, maybe we should try this, this, or this," it's not necessarily administration.
And I'm sure that if you went to the building principal and asked that, made that request, I would see a problem why.
Yeah, usually, I mean, now, I mean, anytime there's an issue, building principal, um, Officer Shilling, they're all involved in all of this information, and gathering this information, and moving it forward.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page with that, we just wanna make sure that the policy, you know, is, reflects that as well.
And that's kind of what we wanna make sure, that's what it come to light, is like, well, what do we have to do to make sure that we can still have these things for safety and all that, but then what does that look like, so-
Yeah.
That's where we're gonna need help from you guys to-
Sure, no, I appreciate you bringing it forward. Um, I guess one other question I would have would be, if we have a certain class, you know, um, say, there's a fourth hour of whatever, that's really out of hand, would we be able to put this in, that we could put a temporarily, a temporary camera in there?
I think that's where it gives the latitude of the district administrator.
Okay, cause like you said, just knowing that the camera's there is a big deterrent as well, so, cause I know we've had some, it's pretty rough classes over the last couple of years, so, and I, kudos to our teachers for handling some of these students, so, yeah. Okay.
Jake, having the one sign that says you may be monitored for video, does that cover the entire building, or?
From my understanding, as long as they're posted at the doors, basically, our main entrances-
Okay.
Stating that the building is under surveillance, I believe, but I can double check that, but-
I know-
That's the way it sounds in this policy, but-
I, I believe that's correct, um, however, and I asked this before, if we're recording voices, that also has to be mentioned on that sign, so your communications and-
Are we?
Yes, that is, that's a legal saying, yep.
Are we?
Oh.
Are we recording voices?
I don't know.
I don't know, but if you're using it in classrooms-
Our system doesn't have voices.
I was gonna say, I don't think it does.
Not to my-
See, the, the cameras we have on all of our transit vehicles, it has that verbiage that she has clearly stated that you're being monitored, both video and recording.
Our buses have it.
Yeah.
And that also addresses buses in here, so you probably wanna, that's in there to make sure all your stuff falls into place.
The policy here would only, only be attached to buses that are owned by the district, since we're, since we contract, our contractors are responsible, we're not, we can't mandate him to do anything.
Sure. So, when you're reviewing these tapes, even for professional development, is it, is there sound on it, is that?
I think one of the cameras does, not all of them do, though.
Okay, is it helpful?
Sound is helpful if it picks up what's being said, absolutely, or-
Yeah.
What happens when, when there's a fight or anything, the-
The sound, yeah.
The sound is beneficial.
Yeah, I could see that being a good thing.
Because it's not a matter of he said, she said, this is what happened, it is all conveyed.
Yeah.
But your FERC laws do not allow you to use that in the fashion of children.
Oh, thank you.
So, there's, I mean, there's some clear cut guidelines there, so watching the video is one thing, um, even who can have access to that, um, some pretty tight guidelines, lawyer, lawyers could definitely guide that conversation-
Okay.
If you have questions.
I know with our company, we are extremely tight on who can see the video.
Right.
Especially with minors, like, you know, the whole-
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting you say that, because if our buses, you know, if our buses have cameras and are also recording sound, I understand that-
That's, that's, that's a different company.
Yeah, I understand that, but my question is, how, how, do they have a written that they can do that, and how can we implement that to be able to use here?
We may not know, and because we're educators operating under professional claims from DPI, and other legal entities, we, we do know better, so we should share and make sure that.
Okay.
And I guess at the same point, I mean, we're in the classroom with these kids every day, and we're, we're instructing them, and we're right there, so if we're watching that video record, and I don't see an issue with that personally, but I'm sure there's some guidelines and things that have to be followed, but you know what I mean, I mean-
Well, right.
We're there doing the job all day long with those kids, that we would be involved in.
I think the point though is, is-
Is that everybody does it?
That the recording is housed at the district with IT, under their review, the recordings you have are-
They have the custody of that video.
Like, that's, that's the-
Well, and like, it was mentioned before, I mean, if you have to leave the classroom to go somewhere else, I mean, yeah, you're working with those kids every day, but you're not there to see what really happened, too, so I think the sound, you know-
And I think something else, too, that probably goes to what Colleen was talking about, is that in the policy, it talks about getting permission from the building principal, because we have kids who have permission not to be videotaped.
Mm-hmm.
So, holding that close to the vest, so to speak, then he would go and say, "Hey, I need to review this from whatever time, for so many days or whatever," and then he would be given access to that.
So, that would be a question for Dean, like, would we need to, like, call that out specifically, cause like, when, when I'm asked if, if my kid's gonna be recorded, I'm thinking for social media purposes, I'm, you know, if news, you know, news channel present or something.
But it's just recording a-
Right, so I think if that was separated, and that if, like, parents knew that it would be only used for, you know, in extreme situations, like you said, and only viewed, be able to be viewed by very specific positions, then that might be different. But, like Colleen said, I think we need to check and see what we can, can do with our attorney.
So, what happens when a parent says, "No, you can't record my kid"?
Yeah, how's that work, like in the hallway?
Then that's where, if that, if that were to happen, that's where, knowing who those students are, to protect their privacy, because-
You wouldn't let anybody see it.
Correct.
It would get recorded, but nobody could see it.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Perhaps, yes, but, I mean, it's just like when things happen on the bus, as a building principal, you know, you would have one family that would call and say, "Well, I wanna see the video because I don't think my child did this," well, yeah, you can't see the video, because I can't give you the exposure to all the students on that bus. So, it's, it's a protective measure for all students.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, the current policy that we have, that's standing, covers everything that Mike wants to do and his other team of, in the tech head place, so what does he need to do to make a requisition for cameras? Does he come to you, does he go to Mike, or, how, what's that process that he needs to do?
So, he would not be making the requisition, it would be first the removal of the cameras, and then, I'm assuming Jake and Mr. Colson would go and look at the areas to determine what needed to be put in place there, because like I said, I would imagine the equipment is probably more expensive, more expensive, probably maybe higher quality, I don't know.
Might have a wider view.
And it may not, right, it may not require as many, so it could be a, a situation of it's not necessarily a one-to-one, but it could be that one better camera could replace all of them, I'm sure, and that's just figuring, speaking of-
And it could be that Mark may already have some that are used from around the district somewhere else, that could potentially go in there to serve the purpose for that room.
Yeah.
And I mean, we would wanna make sure that we review the areas being covered as well-
Yeah.
Prior to, you know.
Yeah, so it would involve the teachers of that area as well.
Okay.
Did you have another question?
I was just gonna say, as far as regarding quality of the cameras, the ones that we have, except for room one forty-two and the recording studio, which are our older cameras, all of those are 4K Ultra HD cameras, so they are capable of probably four times the resolution of most of the district cameras right now.
Okay.
And that was a, the reason for that is we wanted only have one camera that we could zoom into-
Sure.
To get a larger area, so we can see that detail of what really happened from across the shop.
Yeah, so if something is-
So, those cameras are, I don't know if they, the cameras you could buy are gonna be better without special ordering, maybe should they bear better-
Sure.
If that's the case, so, that was the only, the only thing I'm not bringing up is that. I don't think there's a quality difference, and the, the RAM is hand-pressed, which is a pretty well-known brand, but, and they are blocked on our district network to only be on the network, they can't go, they can't talk to the internet-
Okay.
Or at least that's what Ben has assured me of, I think, is that, I told him that's what I wanted, is that they couldn't, they're on a separate IP range, and they can't be what I wanted is that they couldn't. They're on a separate IP range and they can't be
Okay.
reached through the internet. And then all the video footage is stored off the camera.
Okay.
Like it's an SD card in the camera physically. It doesn't go anywhere else. So we have to access the camera remotely with a computer in order to actually even get the footage.
From the SD card?
From the SD card on the camera. We, we access it from the network.
Okay.
So it's not stored anywhere else, just on the camera itself.
Okay. So I think for one to save us money, I think it would be advantageous to see, have Ben do some research, contact the company and see if there is a way that we can tie it into our system and just have, you know, connect it.
Yeah.
And versus buying new, you know, all new cameras. Because that's going to be pretty costly. Yeah, especially if, if they're high quality, like you're saying. So I would assume that, that there's got to be a way that we can tie it in. It's just got to figure out how.
Mark and Jake can come up with.
Yeah. Yep.
Something's good.
So, but we will.
I'm going to always keep Glenda in the loop.
Absolutely.
Are these cameras functioning right now or are they shut off?
Right now, they're not all working. Right now, they're not all working. We're having some, there's some issues with them, right?
Well, I don't mean that. I mean, since you brought this issue up, Glenda, I assume we shut them off?
No. So we had a conversation the other day about the cameras because I was not aware of the history. And then Jake brought it up. And then we had a meeting the other day. And then it was brought to light that they had all been disconnected. Wasn't that what we were told? They had all been disconnected because they were supposed to have been removed. Now, I don't know at what point that was, if that was before these 4K HD cameras were purchased. I don't know that. I can't speak to that. I just know that we were under the understanding that, I was under the understanding, I'll speak for myself, that they were all disconnected.
Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking that when you say they'll be removed, can we just shut them off so they look like they're still there until we get the new ones and put them in?
So.
Kids are pretty sharp when they, it won't take them very long to see that, hey, that camera's not there anymore.
Correct.
They look at them every day.
Well, and another issue is that, you know, if.
I suppose they can even tell if they're on or off, huh?
I just feel like the second that we do that, something is going to happen. And we're going to wish we really had something there. So I.
Does it have to be attached though to?
The district.
Yes. Like we, we could be working towards that. Yeah. Yeah. So.
But the thing is, the biggest thing is, is the child protection laws that are of concern. Because these aren't, these aren't being monitored at the district level.
Okay. So I wonder if like parents of those specific children could sign whatever we need them to sign and say, hey, know that your kids are going to be recorded? I don't know.
My, my, my recommendation.
Of course, it's more complicated.
I highly recommend we turn these off immediately.
Okay.
Follow the policy, follow the procedure, get approval from the district administrator.
Okay.
And activate or reinstall.
Okay. So shut them off and then get approval.
And we don't have to announce that they're shut off so that the kids still think they're on.
Other than we just.
Take that secret to your grave.
Yes. Yeah. So we'll, we'll update the policy.
We will.
No. No. Yeah. We're leaving the policy.
So do you want to speak on behalf of your team? Or do you want to have anything with?
Comment up there.
We'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Did you have something to add to?
I was just going to say that the only thing I'll bring up is as far as turning them off is that you have to remove them. Because one of the other parts of the policy too is that you can't have a non-functioning camera.
Which there already is though, right? Because you said some don't work.
Right.
Well, there's some of them that I can't reach right now, but I can physically access them and.
So they're not working.
They are recording technically, but it's just that there's a problem with our network right now. Our network has been problematic on that end of the building for several years.
I would think that we have cameras at different points throughout the year that stop working for, for a reason. I think there's a reasonable amount of time in which we can address the malfunction or an error or an issue without falling into big cameras.
I just, I just know from a legal standpoint, we just want to be real careful with the liability side of that. We just don't want to have cameras that are faking.
Right.
Doing, doing nothing because if something does happen, somebody's expecting it.
It was your, it was your request to leave them up because the kids don't.
Yeah.
So we can take them out.
It was my request.
I mean, oh, sorry. I thought it was.
Well, yeah.
I just, I think that we.
I think the best thing to do is to handle it as quickly as you can. If you've got to get new cameras, get them as quickly as you can.
Yeah.
Get them in there.
Okay.
Hopefully they look just like the old ones and the kids won't even notice there was a change.
Okay. Any more questions, comments at that? Okay, seeing no more. We're going to move on to task force update.
Two minutes.
No, when, when is the next meeting going to start?
Posted to not start before.
Yeah. So, yeah, we have a little bit. Yeah.
All right. Task force update. Just wanted to kind of recap that, you know, we met on the 21st, had discussion of what a possible charge to the board. It sounded like there was a pretty good general consensus of at least the thought of what the charge would look like. So Lori is going to make some sample, like a sample charge and bring that back on October 19th to discuss tweak if needed. And then the hope is to adopt a formal charge at that meeting from the task force to the board. Questions about some of that?
Okay. So when you say formal charge, can you just clarify what, exactly what that means? Because I looked at the roadmap. I just, I want to make sure I'm on the same page.
So like an example would be, um, task force found that our elementary schools are in great shape and we charged the board to do nothing with them.
Okay.
Or we found North to need X, Y, and Z. The middle school to need nothing. The high school to need A, B, C. Or it could look like we're good with the elementaries, but we want you to look into the capacity of the school.
Okay.
It could, it could vary a little bit. It's a, it's kind of a broad thing to highlight the problem that they feel is most pertinent to address. And then you guys to kind of find a solution for it. So it's not going to give you the exact solution.
Okay.
You know, step by step, but it's going to give you the broad direction of what you need to find the solution for.
Okay. So in the summary sheet, you're asking, when, when should we do the middle school and the high school tours?
Yeah, that, well.
So we would want to do that before doing the formal charge because then you have the whole picture of what the district buildings look like.
All buildings.
Yeah. And I, I, my, the point of that question is, I think that we had talked about doing them during occupied times. And I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's the, the morphological way to show these two buildings. I think that we want to talk more about the conditions and the ages of the buildings, at least at first. You know, I think if we look back at what we did with elementaries, we went to North on an unoccupied time, went through the structural things, and then followed up with an occupied time. Because I think that if we do occupied tours of these two buildings.
You're going to miss a lot of the.
A lot of the people are going to have questions. But what's the, they're, they're going to want to dig into the details more. They're not just going to want to see how it operates. Not saying that we can't do an operate tour as well, but I think that we want to do that there in the evening, unoccupied, so I can take them through and show them more details and stuff.
Okay.
Does that?
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, so feedback that I've heard from those that have taken the tours is that there was not enough time allowed, allowed. But they wanted to be able, because it was kind of, you know, especially the one at North. So we had the group, it was kind of a bigger group, but maybe it should have been split into two. And one started at one end, one started at the other end and kind of did that way. Because otherwise, yeah. Because otherwise, like you were up ahead of the group and like we had people way back here and they're talking about, you know, this, that and everything. And they're just like, well, what's this and what's that? And, you know, you're telling people about this other section.
I get that. I just struggle a little because we also had people that left during the tours as well because they lost interest in what I was talking about because it was too long. So I've, I've always tried to be available after any meeting or tour to answer more questions or have told task force members, you know, because I know that there was some, two people that had shared that same thought with me. And I personally invited them. I said, call me anytime if you want. If there's really something that you want to go and look at, I will take you on that tour. Just you, I'll make the time. You can go and look at it.
Right.
So.
And that's why I like to go to recording.
They haven't taken me up on that.
Yeah.
So.
I, I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
It's hard to satisfy everyone.
Yes.
Because like I said, there's people that thought it was way too long as well.
Well, and the one thing about the first north, when it was after, you know, in the evening, when there wasn't any kids there, was that we were able to record it. When we'd go during the day, you can't record it because of the, you know, students. Yeah. So.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Did most of the task force members show up for those ones during the day?
No, the first one we had five and the second one we had two.
Yeah. I was going to comment, but it wasn't convenient.
I don't remember what it was that was going on that I didn't make.
We put them during lunchtime thinking, one, that's a, a good transition period for the building. Two, that people would hopefully be able to line their lunch hours. I know not everybody has the same old flexibility, but I figured lunchtime tour would be more comprehensive than, you know, 9:00 AM or something like that.
I like, the, the thing where you're offering to take people on an individual tour, I think is great, except you might want to send that out to all members and say, I'm going to take Andy Meara in an individual tour because he wants to see these items. And if you're interested, see us at all.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah. That'd be a good idea.
Because some people might think they're imposing, but.
Yeah. And they just don't want to go by themselves. Yeah. For whatever reason. Yeah.
Or they may not want to ask.
Yeah.
They would feel like, may feel like putting somebody else if they do ask.
Right.
Yeah. So I will look to schedule those meetings here in the next week.
Yeah, the 19th is coming up fast.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So I will look to schedule them. Probably two weeks a night. Pick two nights.
Okay.
One here and one at the middle school and, um.
Okay.
Do a tour and we'll try to keep it. I hope, I hope that a lot of task force members do show up and I'll try to tailor it to what those members that do show up's interests are. Do my, do my best to try and cover what they want and make it appropriate for them.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot to it. So I mean, I could talk forever. Not everybody wants to listen to me talk.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No. Okay, moving on to the crisis plan.
Okay. So the crisis plan, um, the big things that we do have updated.
If you click where it says crisis plan under rationale, it'll take you to the actual plan.
There is a link. I apologize. I'll try and make that. No.
It doesn't look like a link though. Because I didn't know it was on there. I just thought it was like a gray, copy and paste type thing.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. It's not the blue highlight.
Where did you see that?
Where it's rationale, near the bottom of the topics on the sheet.
I, they're not logged in. Okay. So the, the new changes in here, what's been updated is not highlighted. Correct?
No, we did not change any of the actual like words in any of the responses or anything.
You just changed names.
Just updated people.
What we updated was if you go to page 60 of the document.
Sure. So whoever, who's in charge of?
Yep, the new data, updated contacts.
Supplies and cost and evacuations.
61, that gives us a full chart for an incident command response.
Okay.
Sorry, incident command center.
Okay.
Now, this incident command center is a new document altogether that we're working on building from when we look at the safety grant, the departments that we have to do before, everything from the mental health response side. This part of it was also embedded in there that, that they wanted to see this full chart within there.
Okay.
We did have some semblance of it before, but not as formal and clear as this. So I like that. Additionally, when we look at how we deal with, like a threat assessment from like student or mental health perspective, a lot of the stuff in here is more physical. We're, we're making a very, very conceited effort to focus on the mental side, right? So a lot of that runs through Colleen's office, Mrs. Burcon's office, and at the counseling office. And what that looks like is say, a staff or an employee says something that may be threatening or concerning, whether it be threatening themselves or threatening someone else, or just concerning in a, in a manner that we think needs to be addressed. There's a whole, there's a whole project or a, a whole form that comes out and you do a three-tiered assessment.
Okay.
That we need to find a way to embed with, into this crisis plan.
And.
However, if now we have it, it's housed within those offices. And these responses get you to those offices, but we want to find a way to get those documents built into there. We did start on it last year with, uh, people that are no longer here anymore. And I'm having a hard time pulling that information together.
So you cannot find the documents is what you're saying?
I can't find them right now.
And we're going to be okay because DOJ, OSS, it's, FBI that we can access.
Let me clarify. We have all of the process. We have the form, we have the threat assessment. We have the links. We have the process all done. What I'm trying to do is pull this together in a one or two page with links and, and very clean that anybody that looks at this crisis plan can understand in a better way. So that they, you know, we don't want to put 40 pages of assessment embedded in this document.
Right.
But to, to create that two-page document, that's what I was working on last year. That's what we were working towards to have that for this year.
So we put a bunch of work, time and effort in, and it's.
He's, he's, they got the stuff. So Jake will understand the work.
And it's, well, yeah, I know you, you can, I have faith that you can totally recreate it. I'm just thinking.
No, no, it's just a two-page. All that other stuff, the whole process, how we handle it, all of that is happening. We have the forms, we have the procedure, we have the resources. We have all that. What I need is a two-page that, that really helps explain to any, any person looking at this crisis plan. Okay? Someone made a concerning statement. This is what you do. And these are the steps to follow. And that leads them to everything that happens anyways. But I just want to reference them here because we don't have a good reference to guide people within this.
Right. So when you say, when somebody makes some form of state, concerning statement, we're talking about students as well? Or is it just staff?
Students and staff. And, and it could be like I'm a student and I make a threatening statement and my friend hears it, or just someone sitting next to me hears it. So just getting adults on the same page that, that is the first person that really should be intercepting that. We need to clearly define and tighten that up a little bit in the district. So my experience is what I'm aware of is it comes to building principal, counselor, social worker, or building principal, associate principal, counselor, social worker. They are the first people that immediately have a process that Jake said they define. And it's, it's defined by other entities, but we go through it like in a set.
And that's any kind, any kind of, like it could be email, it could be on social media, it could be verbal?
Depending the level of it, yes.
Okay.
Anywhere.
Okay. And then. Okay, and then will that address like the different types of communication and like what forms that communication will be? Like, I know it, this says that, um.
This is just really a process that the Office of School Safety and the Department of Justice says schools have to respond in, um, um, mental health supportive ways. So for instance, the last person you call is your SRO.
Mm-hmm.
The first person you call is someone who can interview that individual, that minor child who said it, or student who's eighteen that said it. And then you have clear processes, you interview the student.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to call parents and then if you, if you determine it's a level two, then you go to the next process and you go to the next. And it's really about us interviewing to determine that level of threat.
Mm-hmm.
So what happened previously, they did it, that's the great thing about it. So we, we kind of have that process, we just need something in paper.
Okay.
So they can quickly access it, I'd love to get it in edict, when we're using it, just access it and then they can notify myself and Glenda that it's all been done instead of the phone verbal little thing.
Yes, yeah.
But it worked, like, the process was still followed with due diligence, which, um, I was happy because it was the first thing, like Jakey's like, Colleen, here, oh, let me see the questions, do we, they did it.
Okay.
So that was a great thing. And then from there, whatever the process is, I had to notify maybe on who does that, but.
Okay.
Lots of kids say a lot of things.
Right.
And it does take up a significant chunk of your day if you're an administrator.
Oh, yeah, I can.
Or a social worker.
Definitely see that.
It's very tight, who would answer that?
Yep.
The last person, and sometimes it's the first person we call because we're shorthanded and maybe we're not used to responding in that way, more trauma-sensitive way.
Right.
Because if there is, it'd be determined through the pre-pick questions that we don't pick, like it's not formed. That the child needs other resources and we are obligated.
Right.
To accomplish this.
Right, I guess.
And that's the work that we've really worked on for probably two, two years for sure, one and three years. And we have all that, that's not gone.
Yep, you just, yeah, I get what you're saying.
I just want a quick sheet so that we can plug it in so that if someone looks, hey, what's we doing with a threatening statement?
Right.
What do we do?
Yep.
But there's a lot to that and it's very dependent on a lot of factors when that comes out.
Right.
How that all, so it's not something easily translatable into a five-step plan.
Sure. So what I, I guess, something, I mean, maybe you guys already have this in the works, what I'd like to see is, you know, based off of whatever threat, right? Or whatever's going on, you know, if, say the school goes into lockdown, we have a medical lockdown. What are, you know, because it spreads like wildfire. You know, the kids and the community and then it just blows up and, um, so like what kind of communication is going to go out? Is that going to be, I know there's another school district, Philly for me, I can't think of, which one is it, down south? Um, that if there was any type of lockdown whatsoever, there was an immediate, you know, there was just some, uh, we're okay text basically. You know, yes, we went into lockdown, it was a medical lockdown, it lasted for five minutes, everybody's okay. You know, the school's not like, you know, so parents don't freak out, kids don't freak out. Um, and seeing if there's a threat, you know, like, and how is that being communicated? Is it being text to all the families, is it emailed, is it the caller, you know, the dialer? I mean, that's what I think we really need to also hone in on and get that very clear so that we know.
That, that's always a tough one. We, we go round and round and we try to vet that out the best we can because I always use the, the fuel tank scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Each, each occurrence is going to have its own fuel tank.
All right, yep.
And you can't take fuel out of it, but you can definitely put fuel into it.
Mm-hmm.
So sometimes by communicating, you're adding fuel, sometimes by not communicating, you're adding fuel.
Well, words are important.
Right, but, but it can go both ways.
Yes.
You know.
Yep, but at least like from a parent's standpoint.
Hardness.
I would rather hear from the district before I hear from anybody at the grocery store about what is going on.
So part of, to answer your question, and I can lean into the previous situation at the emergency experience, was the processes were followed. So that would have been determined, um, like a level one, meaning we wouldn't have gotten mass communication. I think, um, Glenda Johnson did a great job of communicating, but literally like OSS and DOJ, they handle it with him.
Yeah.
I, I know that may not be what you want to hear, but truly, they did the due diligence. So once you determine that, so now depending on the level of threat, that's in the, um, uh, the concern of.
That's, you know.
That would do more communication. So I, I hear what you're saying and I'm wondering how we can find that happy meeting. I went at that one, did have a, a, a email.
Yes. Yep.
We did email and.
Was it call? Call, yeah, caller text, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, that was great because we did not have that before.
Those are good.
So that was, that was really great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did have one event last year that did.
Yes.
In reverse though, we sent out notification and then it, then it blew it up.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's the balance that's so hard to tell.
Yeah.
And, I mean.
It's a tough call either way.
I hate not knowing stuff too, but the way social media works.
Yep, no, I understand that.
There's times that I hear about something through someone at the store.
Mm-hmm.
Before I hear, and it's just, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll use one, one morning that a bus got stuck last year. Well, it was on social media and someone at central office asked me about it and I'm like, I don't really think about it. So I called, I called the bus garage and they're like, we literally got the call a minute ago and we're just jumping in the truck.
I know, I know.
I'm like, okay, well.
I took a video, I put it on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, before I called, yeah.
Put it out there, the video and put it on Snapchat, Facebook, Twitter, whatever is out there and it's, it's gone.
I understand, yeah.
And you can't get it back once it's gone.
You can't control it.
No.
So I, I feel your stress because I'm here doing it. It bothers me when I don't know what's going on, me, you too.
Well, especially like if there's like any kind of like threat or anything like that, I think the more communication, the better. If, if parents, you know, and there's always going to be people that blow, you know, make something out of nothing. And, um, but just having that communication is going to create more transparency, more trust within the community, you know, because we didn't have that before. Um, and so when the first time we did go out, it was like, you know, what's going on? Because we never had that before. And like I said, the schools in the southern part of the state, um, they actually, they would do that every time they have a lockdown. I'm not saying, you know, we don't want to get bogged down with that either, but as a parent, I mean, I think that would, you know, we want to work on building the community's trust again, so. Um, yeah, and, and maybe we want to tie the, you know, see if the police department will work with us because they have a Facebook page, maybe they want to make a statement that can be shared.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and give it more credibility, I don't know, just different ideas.
So maybe it sounds like determining when, at what point of that threshold of severity, what will it determine?
Yeah, one, two, three, or four, so it's a level one, kids say a lot of things.
Right.
So I, because I, my surgeon's did a great job recently too of also not undermining or, or not forgetting about, um, the alleged perpetrator in the situation too. And feeling that in the negative impacts and consequences that may be unintended. So it sounds like that balance to ensure that we're respecting and ensuring for safety of all students, including those involved. Uh, but maybe it's determination, when would a notification be sent out when it hits a tier, whatever?
Right.
And, and then that way, if there's sort of mouth, but there's not a mass communication, well, as a parent now, I'm at least feeling more reassured that it did hit a level of severity that would require communication.
Yeah.
To kind of merge that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
No, it's a good, great point, Andy, not trying to complicate it, there's nothing cut and dry.
Yeah, there's no way we're ever gonna make everybody happy.
No, but I, I still think erring on the side of communicating, you're always, you're still better because you're at least sending a consistent message.
You're acknowledging the situation, yeah.
The larger group, right.
Instead of, yeah, trying to push it under the rug, it's, have the perception of that.
Right, that we're not being transparent.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions?
Just as always, this is a working document, we have to get it approved one time a year. I'd like to get it out as soon as we can with the school year. I'm hoping that going forward, we can, you know, there was, there was times we're gonna get it out till December, that's not okay. I'd really like to get it where we can get it to September.
Okay.
The tough part is getting the hiring, getting the school started, identifying the CPI teams, things of that nature. Sometimes takes a, a minute for us to kind of get all of our staff in the building and set up and know who's that, who that team's gonna be, so.
So this will come to the board then for approval, okay.
Some of the blanks that are in there will be filled in before the board's approval.
Which, yes, they would, it's just a missing.
Yeah, there's just some missing phone numbers and names that.
There shouldn't be, so I'm asking which.
On page seventy.
Oh.
Page seventy, for example.
Yeah.
But yeah, okay.
Seventy.
Mm-hmm. I think that's what he's saying, because I think there's a home and then a cell.
I was just quickly looking through.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
So I think that's what Danny's referencing. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, we can.
Call for the mate, okay.
Wrap this show up. Um, next Building and Grounds Committee meeting will be Monday, November sixth. Thank you, everyone.
We will call that meeting to order at six thirty-eight. Um, and start with real copies.
Juliette Nelson.
Present.
Kristen McMillan.
Kristen is unable to attend tonight.
Jade Schrader.
Addison.
She's probably in the field.
Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Amy Stutts, her name?
Here.
Amy Burkhart?
Here.
Glenda Wodzinski?
Here.
I'm sorry.
Keep going, keep going.
I just turned one off.
Okay. Uh, curriculum instruction, Start College Now.
Yes, so every March and every October, we have to approve, um, our students who have applied for the Start College Now program. So it is October, so for the spring of twenty twenty-four, we have, um, fourteen students who have placed their applications in with the high schools to attend and receive credits, uh, and attend those college courses through our technical colleges. So currently, this fall, we have about the same number, so we have about fourteen students who are currently going through the Start College Now program with us. And in the spring, we'll have about fourteen as well. So some of the areas that are really popular are the welding academy, CNA, understanding substance abuse, developmental psych, intro to stats, private pilot ground, pharmacology for allied health, and some medical assistance and medical insurance classes that one student is, um, asking to take in these, in these classes. So this just needs to be, um, I'm recommending that it is a motion at the board meeting to approve these fourteen students so that they can be effective for the spring twenty twenty-four semester in some of these classes that they've signed up for. Approximately twenty thousand dollars, I just took that from the fourteen previous, that's kind of around the range, but we get a invoice from the colleges once they have enrolled and put in their, their classes.
So we don't know the exact cost until they're enrolled?
This is just their approval that they can actually enroll.
Oh, yes, yes, got it, yes.
So yes, once they do enroll, yep, yep.
Okay.
Then they, then they sign up for their classes.
What's the private pilot ground?
Um, that one I don't know.
I feel like that's new, do you recall that? I don't recall that one, I'm not sure.
I believe it is new. Yeah. Met with Mr. Roberts today and he was talking about this being new, so I'm not sure that it's ever been offered.
Private pilot ground.
Pilot, yep, and that's what it was called.
In a plane, no?
Well, I know, um, Privates School District offers flying lessons, like there are students who actually go out and they fly with someone, so it's, it's.
I know we've had two students in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Going through the class and.
Yep.
And getting their license, their pilot license.
Which is absolutely amazing.
I think it is, yeah.
Yes.
They're both supposed to take the license type.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Um.
Sorry, I know you guys, they're gonna be like, oh my gosh, here's a question.
Ask a new ass.
So, um, the welding academy, is that through what?
NTC.
NTC, okay.
So most of them are through NTC except for one student who is.
Nikole.
Through Nikole.
And what class is that?
Start College Now would only be tech school, correct?
Yeah, all right.
Yep.
Yep, it is the one who is going for medical officer, insurance, medical assistance, medical law, ethics, kind of that medical field.
Okay, so the private pilot ground is through NTC?
It's through NTC.
Okay.
Yep, all the other ones are NTC.
Okay.
You said plural, do you have other questions?
My other question was about the pilot.
Got it, okay.
Because I know our local airport is doing class, you know, lessons and stuff like that, so.
I love that.
Yep, they have a whole junior program, it's really awesome, yeah.
Okay, that's it. Okay, so remind me, I don't, do I, we don't need a motion in committee? Yeah, so we'll bring it to the full board, okay. All right, moving on, student achievement data.
So I linked in, we, uh, finished our benchmark assessment, which is Fastbridge, four K through eleventh grade. Um, I spoke it at, spoke about it at the last committee meeting. Um, so it is a screener that allows us to take some benchmark data around reading and math. Uh, four K in kindergarten, do some early assessments, it's early reading and early math. We apps, actually did four K this year, a little bit different than in the past because we know with the reading bill coming up next year, that four K is going to have to take a screener, so we wanted to prepare. Um, Fastbridge has opened up a new screener for four K, so that's been exciting that we can get some data on our, our littlest of students. I linked in the agenda or on this, uh, summary sheet, the district data, so if you want to open that and take a look. There's some goals at the top of where we want to get, get our students to. Currently Brad about fifty-four percent in ELA in the whole district, so kind of combining all that four K through eleventh grade, which isn't the best way to look at data because there's a lot of different parts to that, so just this first one, just to kind of get a comprehensive look. So we, and I say it in the terms of we are failing fifty-four percent of our students because I think we need to really recognize where we are. For me, data is not personal, it's not a blame, it's not a shame, this is just where we are, this is where our data lies. And this is our starting off point, so we need to be very clear on that. So we are failing fifty-four percent of our students and we as a comprehensive school district, not one teacher, not one school. It is a comprehensive, goes from curriculum to behaviors, down to, um, our instruction, so kind of everything all combined. And we are failing fifty-three percent of our students in math. So that's our current, I also linked in some of our forward data, um, based on our state report card that will be coming out soon. But that's our forward data from last year, so that's third through eighth grade. And if you scroll down to kind of the colored section, I wanted to make sure we're really going to be clear on spring to spring data because sometimes our students can hit a point in spring, do a summer slide, and it's hard to, like, really make sure that we're having accurate data. So that spring to spring is going to be really important. So when you look at the chart, kind of the brown-orange column is that cohort of students last year. So what that means is if you're looking at grade one under A reading, the kind of brownish color, it says sixty-eight below, when they were kindergartners on that early reading test. So they're currently first graders, that is their kindergarten spring score. And if you look across, we are now failing seventy-five percent of our students in first grade. So that's how you kind of read the chart. So on the right-hand side in the white column, you're going to see the percentage of students identified below grade level in every, um, in every grade up until eleventh grade. So I'll give you a minute to look and see if there's any questions, this is A reading. And then our four K in kindergarten take early reading, which is our letter sounds, um, letter names, some of those blending, um, nonsense words. So that's a different sort of style of test than the A reading, which moves more into the fluency, the comprehension, um, the vocabulary piece of it.
So this is the spring data that we're looking at.
So you're looking just that column that's brown and orange is the spring data for that cohort of children. So if you look at third grade, the spring data is their second grade. At the end of their second grade, they are currently spring, or currently third graders now.
And then the right-hand column is our current.
Current.
So this is what they are in the fall.
We just took this test, the right-hand column, yep.
Okay.
So you will see a huge need in our first grade class.
So we're in says, number of students identified at above.
Mm-hmm.
Grade level.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain that to me? Because we're, we're failing seventy-five percent and then we have.
So ninety-two of our students, so out of a hundred and twenty-two first graders, ninety-two are below, thirty are above. We have thirty students who have hit proficiency.
Okay.
On that benchmark assessment, doesn't mean that they are far, far ahead, so it's not like we're going to forget about those students.
Right.
It means right now, based on the Fastbridge assessment, they are on track. If we continue doing the same thing with this cohort of students, they will be on track by the end of the year. If we just provide them really strong tier one instructions.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we're not going to do anything else for them because when we look at growth, we want to make sure we're seeing aggressive growth and not just typical growth because we know our students have a lot of needs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's what we're going to work on, is that we're going to make that a. Um, so that's what we're going to work on, is that we're going to make that aggressive growth, instead of just the typical growth.
Did, what?
Go ahead.
I think that's really important. We talk about growth routinely. Um, when we look at assessments and celebrations, and I think growth is, is absolutely something to celebrate, but, um, accelerated, no, what was already used?
Aggressive.
Aggressive growth is really important, um, and I appreciate you using that, because you said earlier, language is important. We know our numbers aren't strong, and we know that, um, we have the staff that can get those numbers at a much better place, so I appreciate that, I just want to point it out.
We're going to look at both, so it's important that you look at growth, because we do celebrate, especially for our students, we show them that growth, look how hard you've been working. We also, as adults, know that you can grow within the fifteenth percentile and still be really far behind the rest of your peers. So it's really great to have growth, but we also need to look at it in the context of, have you met proficiency? And are you on track grade level-wise to be with your grade-level peers? Um.
Sorry, you're false.
Hello.
Better like the network?
Um, but I think both of those pieces are, are important to look at, to make sure we're not just focused on one and not the other.
Looking at grade one.
If, not if.
I'm going to, is it, is it, I'm going to have you just, can you recap what you just shared? Because I know that you're invested in this, and the data's important too, Judy.
Sure.
So thanks for coming late, but I feel like it's going to also proactively address questions that you're going to have to.
Okay, so looking at the data, um, when you scroll down to the chart, like with the green and red colored.
Yes.
Okay, so what we're going to look at this year is spring to spring data. Doesn't mean we don't look fall to winter and winter to spring, because those are the times we benchmark. Within those times, we're doing progress monitoring on our students, so whatever intervention we are providing, we are keeping weekly assessments to make sure that our students are making the progress we want. So you'll notice on the left-hand side, kind of that brown-orange color, that's their spring data from last year. So if you look at first grade, it says sixty-eight below fifty-six percent. That was when they were kindergartners in spring. They are currently our first graders, so if you move across, we have a hundred and twenty-two of them sitting in our schools. Thirty on the Fastbridge in fall was, were proficient. Ninety-two were below grade level, and we are currently failing seventy-five percent of our first graders. So that's what the chart looks like, and it goes from four K to eleven. So what I was just explaining is we're going to look at two things, we're going to look at growth and aggressive growth for our students, but we're also going to look at proficiency, because it's really easy to get caught up in the growth and be really excited about growth, like, ninety percent of our classes have grown, but we're all sitting really far away from proficiency. That's a different story then. We all made growth, and we made it above proficiency, and we're into advanced in some of those pieces, so it's important to look at both and not get caught up in one. Um, definitely with our students, I said we celebrate growth, because we want them to see their achievement and how hard they're working. So that's a great conversation, you're not going to continue to just say, well, you're below proficiency, you didn't make it, you didn't make it. We celebrate that growth with them, but as adults, we understand that that proficiency line is very clear on those benchmarks of where we need to get our students to be, and how, where we want them to be above grade level, not just back grade level.
Kind of say thank you for recognizing the difference there.
Yeah.
That is huge.
And both have places to be celebrated, but both have places of.
Yeah. Great.
Concern and, and knowledge around.
Right.
And focus.
A reading is Fastbridge?
A reading is Fastbridge, so you'll notice that four K and kindergarten take early reading, which I was saying was the nonsense words, their letter sounds, their letter names, some of that lower level, um, reading skills. And then once they hit into A reading, it's still some of that phonics, but at a higher level. And then it goes into fluency, comprehension, vocabulary as they get higher.
Okay, so it's not directly addressing checking the older kids' phonics?
No.
Or will that show up on here if that's the cause and it's not?
Well, some of it is in the lower grade levels, some of it does contain that in A reading, it's a combination of all. But when you look at the early reading, it's basically those foundational skills.
So as you're taking the test, it's adjusting for you, so we do have some fourth graders, when I just looked at their data and sat down with the fourth grade team, that have phonics skills, as if they are probably first or second grade skill level. So we have to address those, we have to make sure we're putting some systematic phonics instruction in. Otherwise, we're passing those fourth graders on, having this big skill gap, um, with some of those foundational skills that they don't have yet, because we're going to get it to them, so they can be readers.
And to chime in, to think of kids, students with IEPs, we might be very well supporting that skill discrepancy as well, so.
So when you're, when you say that we're, I can't just repeat what you just said, it's a lot. My mind is a blank.
Are you talking about the phonics for older kids?
No, I, when you said that we weren't, um, like they, they, they're missing the phonics pieces for, in the younger grades. Is it because it, they were taught all, like the full phonics piece? Or was it taught that, they only got halfway through that piece?
So what I believe, based on like my data, day into Anago's data, is we didn't have a systematic phonics instruction. We didn't have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. With the curriculum that we did have for many years, that caused our teachers to have to pull the best of grace for them, because they had children sitting in front of them, they had to pull together what they believed was best. And that doesn't create a guaranteed and viable curriculum, that creates piecemeal, so we have small pockets of great things happening. Uh, but we want a system of great things happening as we move forward. Uh, so that's one of the reasons that that guaranteed and viable curriculum that we do have now at those younger grades, we have some strong intervention plans, uh, for four K through third grade and into the middle school as well, to make sure that we are, like I said, making aggressive growth, because we have a lot of gain that we need to make, we have a lot of opportunity gap to close. And you don't close that doing the same traditional things every year, because that gap will just widen and widen, and then we send them to high school, structure them.
Are we, we're on student achievement data right now, so update on ELA is next?
It's coming, yes.
So one other question, um, sorry, um.
Well, you think of the question, just going back to the history of getting a curriculum, I think, um, it's important to share that the, um, level of involvement from our staff in choosing the curriculum is very important, because we didn't have anything, so they were piecemealing. So that is going to show in our results, and again, that's not a teacher or a building doing poorly, that is us as a district not providing the tools and consistency in all of our buildings and what we're doing, so. This is our first full year of implementing.
Yeah.
Which we'll get to.
Source. Mm-hmm. You'll notice some of the data too, um, when you look at last year's that spring data as you get into the high school. This is the first year, I'm being told, so I can only go on off of that, that we had over ninety percent of our students actually take the Fastbridge, it was a big push for us. We test everyone, except if in their IEP, it has that they don't take district assessments, and usually state assessments go along with that. But otherwise, we tested them, I think we are down nine students in the high school right now. So when you look at the old data, the spring, that's not all the students being assessed. They didn't have that high of a number, so some of that data isn't as clean as we want it to be, like apples to apples, but it is a reference to say where we were, uh, where we currently sit right now and what we need to do moving forward.
How much do you think is just for getting their phonics over the summer?
Um, I will say this, there's always a summer slide, however, when you look at our first grade, when you look at some of those elementary, you don't slide that much. Uh, what that says to me is that we had great, maybe great instruction, but nothing to mastery. So like I, at spring, I could test, but I didn't have it mastered to the point where it stuck with me. And then in fall, I still knew how to read, so that summer slide becomes bigger if we don't have mastery of the skill set. Um, and then we see a steeper slide. And then every year, we have to catch up, I was talking to the third-grade teachers of now, we have a bigger jump to do, right? Because we compound, and as a system, we rely on each other, and it's not a kindergarten problem. I said the forward assessment, when that comes out in third grade, is the first year we test forward. When that state report card comes out, that's not a third-grade issue, that's a system issue. I include myself in that as well now, as the curriculum director, that I play a part in that. Um, so when we say that, it's not a third-grade teacher, so we can't point the finger at them. It's a comprehensive from four K up to third grade, and the systems that we've allowed to be put in place, and the things that we need to change. So I want to make sure that's very clear, because as a third-grade teacher, in one of these schools, I'd be stressing, as that forward test comes out, is it all relies on, on me? But really, it's that comprehensive look that got them to third grade, and those third-grade teachers are trying to catch up to get to that level of rigor of the forward with huge gaps coming in.
Did the teachers get to look at this, really, or not?
No, they haven't yet. This is just for the board, and then the principals are going to do their schools, and then present to the board next time at the board meeting, their data from their school, with some action steps that they're taking, um, to move the data in a better direction.
I guess Lucy didn't really have a phonics piece at all, did it? So we were sort of doing a little bit of Wiley Bevins? Wiley, how do you pronounce that?
Bevins.
Bevins, thank you.
And like I said, I think without a systematic way to teach phonics, there's no teacher who comes out of any sort of college with like a strong phonics to the point where they could write their own curriculum to, to teach, right? If there is, like blessings to them, because that's a lot. Um, so they came out of college, or as a veteran teacher, trying to piecemeal that phonics together without a true system. And now that we're providing them a system to do that, we expect their results to be different.
I have two questions. So the first one is, um, in years past, we've had students that have made it to senior level before we've determined that they are dyslexic. So what, do we have anything in place to prevent that? Because obviously, if you, if you have, you know, difficulties like that, and you're, it's just going to get, you know, compounded each year.
Yep.
And they're struggling in every single area.
Yeah, and, and there's SST teams and things like that, along with the psychs that help support that work.
Okay.
Um, it, it's harder to, like, when you look at the first-grade group with so many students at a low level, it's hard to pick out a student who is really struggling based on a disability, rather than.
When they all are.
They're all low right now, but we're going to get them higher. Um, so that does become trickier, but there are some assessments and things like that, that sites help with, and the special ed department helps with.
Okay. The second question, um, have we ever considered partnering with the library on, like, the summertime storytime, reading rewards program, anything like that, to encourage families to go? Because I know when, when my oldest daughter was in elementary, there was a really good reading rewards program.
In the summer or through the whole year?
It was during the summer.
Okay.
Yep, I mean, it could be during, for the whole year, I mean, she read so many books, then she got, you know, free pizza from Pizza, you know, Pan Pizza, or whatever. And.
Booked program.
Yeah, so I think, just to encourage our families to go there and keep reading.
Yeah.
I think that would be a good idea.
I think that, and we can do what we can do with students in front of us, right? We have a lot of hours that we see students, that we can make readers out of them, whether, no matter what grade they are. Um, and families got a lot on their plates as well, and not every family can help support the reading program of their child in that way. But we can make sure and ensure that every child who walks into Anago walks out a reader ready, ready for college or career. That's our, that's our charge.
Okay.
You said these, these are the proficiency data, or this is not the growth?
This is just benchmark, like proficient or not.
Okay.
Yep, so the percentage on the right-hand side are the percentage below. And I think it's important, a lot of times, we present data that shows our proficient level, like, yay, we passed thirty percent of our kids. But at some point, we need to recognize that seventy percent of kids we've left behind. And so when you present it this way, it hits a little bit heavier on the, we're failing seventy-five percent of our kids in one grade level. That is intense, and that needs to be an intensive program put in then, to help support those students and the teachers, because that's a hard time when you have that class that really struggles.
I, I appreciate you saying this hits in a heavier way, but this is, in my opinion, more of a truthful way, because how can we fix a problem if you don't know really what's going on?
I can make it real glossy and pretty for you.
Right.
And talk about like, look at the growth, and it's so great, but for me, we have needs.
Yes.
And we all want the same thing for kids, no matter what grade you teach, no matter what community member. Everyone can sit at this table and say, I want our students in Anago to succeed, and we have to recognize where we are, this is where we are. We don't love it, which is great, because the comeback's going to be a lot better than where we started.
And I very much appreciate that, I just wanted to tell you.
Yeah, we've spoken about just very straightforward, where are we, and how are we going to get, what are we going to do um, to increase in achievement with our plans, and that will be brought to full board with, with the principals presenting. There's one other thing I was going to.
If you look down, there's some graphs as well, they're kind of small, but just that kind of a visual, and then math is underneath. So again, our four K in kindergarten take early math, which is number sense, number identification, subitizing, um, dots. Uh, making sure that in like three seconds, they can see dots and know there's four of them there, rather than having to like singular code them. Um, so some of those skills at the lower level.
The other comment I was going to make is discussions on strategic planning. This is what's valuable, because the board's role is student achievement, and we can see where we're at, and we can make very plausible, realistic goals and intervention-specific, so I feel, um, as chair of this committee, but I've shared this routinely, having a strategic plan helps us, because we can identify our priority areas, um, and how different things or agenda items tie into those priority areas or not. So it's just very helpful, and we can see.
And if things are working.
Growth and accelerated growth very well too. And you mentioned also not forgetting about or overlooking those that are currently proficient, I think that is. Certainly, I get a lot of feedback on students that are proficient, uh, but the focus is always on students that are under, underachieving. And it goes back to your messaging routinely of all students, and so I, I know that, I anticipate there will be positive, um, feedback on those that are doing well currently, and what are we doing to support them, so their scores and achievement continues.
So some of those pieces are already put in, put in place at the elementary, as we start our win, which is what I need, kind of that intervention time, intervention enrichment. So the students that are proficient are at grade level or above, they have an enrichment opportunity in certain grade levels, that inter-reading, the new resource has an enrichment piece of it. Um, we have some read live, which I'll talk about a little bit later, that helps on the fluency and comprehension, it pushes students to a higher level. We have a new assessment on Fastbridge called Comp Efficiency, it was as of last year, which really looks at like inferential thinking, which is a lot of, um, higher-level thinking for our students who are doing really well, but we want to also make sure that they're hitting that inferential thinking, um, and critical thinking process. So there's a lot of pieces that we're going to look at for our students who are struggling, and students who are doing really well, that we're pushing all students, because that aggressive growth is for all and not just some.
I want to point out too, these numbers may seem startling, but I have seen numbers very similar to these, and doing some of these same things is what helped to close those achievement gaps. It is very doable, but also just to be mindful that many times, when you come back in winter, you can see a decline, and then you will see a drastic growth at the end of the year, so. So don't feel like it can't be done.
Yeah.
It can be.
Mm-hmm. And then once we hit winter and we do our Fastbridge, you'll see if you scroll down to the winter tab, that's obviously blank, percentage of student growth will be on there for each grade level, because I think that's important as well, as a grade level, how are we doing? The tier-one kind of plans that we have put in place, that's where that growth will come from, and then the intervention for students as well.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Our.
Go.
So when we talk about A math, what math, like, what do you mean by A math?
So early math is that number sense, so like I said, subitizing, number identification, they have to count certain dots on a page to show they can count.
Yep.
Sequentially, that they start at like five, can they, do they know that six comes next? If we start at sixty, do they know that fifty-nine comes before some of those? Um, once you get into A math, it's a lot more of the concepts of math, addition, subtraction, multiplication, fractions, uh, word problems, knowing that groups of three is something times three, multiplication.
Yep.
So some of those concepts into, into math.
Okay.
And then obviously, at the higher level, it's, or the concepts at the higher level.
So when we see these scores, I'm going to ask the same question.
Yep.
Um, is it, like, we're not, are we getting through the full year's lesson? Or are we only getting through, like, you know, partway through, or?
Mm-hmm. The pacing is going to be. Yeah, the pacing is going to be really important in math. So for example, in third grade, um, and it's not just Anago, it's kind of how all resources are created. For some reason, geometry standards are always put to the end of the, the resource, and it's the one thing that you can quote-unquote skip, and I know there's probably geometry teachers right now, like inhaling their breath. We don't want to do that, um, so we have to make sure that our pacing, that we're, we're not just teaching page to page to teach it, because there's no resource out there that's going to make sure everyone's successful, but that we're looking at our standards, because the curriculum is our standards, it is not our resource. We could live and die by the standards, so making sure that we hit those priority standards before the assessment is always a good plan. Uh, but to make sure that, more importantly, that students are mastering that before moving to the next grade level, so that we're not saying, we didn't get there, and now you're in seventh grade, and we have like forgotten a chunk of the standards that you need to learn, and then eighth grade has moved on, um, that we're really making sure that we're hitting those mastered standards in every grade level.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to flip my screen like this, okay. Update on ELA.
So this is just an update, so eighth through twelfth, twelfth grade used my perspectives last year, so they had a one-year implementation on that. We added this year's sixth and seventh grade to my perspectives, and then kindergarten through fifth grade are using our new inter-reading. It's a whole Mifflin-Hardcourt resource, um, and we are in the implementation process of that. Um, some positives that I've heard around inter-reading, I've been in PLCs, is it's very comprehensive. They're feeling like they don't have to look elsewhere to find things, within Lucy, they had to look, like, the planning was very difficult, because I need phonics, and I need this. They were piecemealing it together, so it's all comprehensively right there. The level of rigor is very high. We have weekly assessments in inter-reading, which, um, we're looking at to make sure they're not too long, that we're not assessing our kids to death, but just making sure that we're really keeping a track of those formative assessments, so teachers are starting to realize that that data is going to be really powerful. as we move forward. The level of rigor, like I said, the vocabulary, some of those pieces have been really great, and people have been really positive. With inter-reading comes a online portion called WAGL. WAGL has not been our friend right now, and it's, I've contacted the company, it is not working, not just in Anago, it's not a systems product, problem here, it's kind of all over that they're trying to work on. So we've kind of told some of our teachers to just stop, you don't need to use that right now, so focus on the instruction from them.
What is that supposed to do?
So WAGL is like an online supplement, like, helps with some of the skills that we talk, really master them. So kind of like a dream box, which we use in math. WAGL is the part of, kind of like Amplify is another one that goes off CKLA, which is another resource, has that online program of practicing the skill.
So the kids can't use it?
Right now, some can, some can't. They're having trouble uploading the rosters to it, and then, like I said, our tech department has been working with the inter-reading company, and I've been calling them as well. They're working on that process, because they're seeing it everywhere. So right now, we're just obviously focused on the inter-reading portion of it. But it is an implementation year, and what that means is people, it is stressful for our teachers, because there's so much, and like I said before, you can't teach everything. So then it's, that's, I didn't get to that part. So really paring down, and what's really helping with this are our coaches, because our instructional coaches are sitting in every PLC, helping them plan. They were pulling resources from the inter-reading program and saying, we're focusing on these things right here, to help our teachers get a jumpstart at the elementary in fourth and fifth grade, to make sure they could start teaching day one. So that has been incredibly helpful, because our coaches are the ones helping to facilitate some of that learning around the resource as we go forward.
How did the coaching go this summer? Or not the coaching, but the training from the company?
So the training was awful.
I remember your email saying that you didn't-
It was bad. So she-
And no one's fault.
Yep, the trainer was supposed to train, and they were having technical difficulties on her end, so they had to, we had to stop the training. So that's been, I will give kudos to all of our teachers for jumping in to this resource without having a lot of training. I just spoke with the trainer today, we're hoping to get her back, and I want her in person, to help us walk through it. Hopefully, she has some idea about what's going on with WAGL at that time, on one of our PD days, so that she can come back and train and help our teachers, which, some of the teachers said it'll actually be nice, because we're into it now, we can ask better questions. Before, we just didn't know, and we just, you know, we were taking information for what it was, but now I think they'll have better questions as they get into of how to utilize the program. But it is an implementation here, it's a lot, and it's a lot to know what to teach and when to teach it, and how to finagle through that.
And a lot of uncomfortableness.
Yeah.
Tell me about the phonics. So I remember when we were implementing this.
Yep.
They had their old phonics, they were making a brand-new phonics that we didn't quite get to see, but they said they were going to sell us. Are we doing that, or are we doing Reading Horizons, or are we doing?
So the phonics in the program would be great if all of our kids were at grade level. I'll say that. If we had all of our kids on grade level, this program would run perfectly. Every resource is made for kids who are at grade level for the grades. So take first grade. If you enroll this resource to people, to kids who are all proficient, that would be sufficient. Right now, it's not sufficient for our students, like any resource would be. It's not inter-reading, it's, we have such skill gaps in that, that we need to supplement right now. We're hoping to not have to do that in the next couple of years, that we can pull back on that. But right now, if we don't do something intensive for our students, we will continue that gap of phonics. So we are going to implement at the elementary level some phonemic awareness, some phonics at the tier-one. So there's structured literacy within the program, it's called, and that is good, but it's not as intense as we need to have it.
So we're doing them both?
So we are going to pull some of the structured literacy out, which is a portion of the phonics, and put in Reading Horizons, because that's going to be more intensive and get our kids to where they need to be. That also will help us to do interventions with Reading Horizons, because then I can get a double dose on that phonics every day, and that's going to catch me up faster. We're hoping when we see the scores start going up, and we're seeing those kids having those skills for phonics, that we can pull back on some of that. Right now, I don't feel comfortable with that, just because of the data and what it looks like, if we just run inter-reading, we will see gains, but we will not see aggressive growth, and we will not close any gap at this point.
How?
Double dipping in pre-teaching for students with INPs.
Did we, was it hard to get Reading Horizons, like, to pay for it and to?
Yes.
Is it hard to get the teachers up to speed on it so quicker?
So with the, with the reading bill, there's always a plan. With the reading bill coming up, a lot of interventions are not going to be able to be used. So like, there's some that aren't going to be, that won't qualify for the reading bill. So we wanted to make sure, really intentional about that, that we weren't saying, we're going to do this, and the next year, like, just kidding, we can't do that anymore. So I believe that Reading Horizons is really busy currently, because it's such a strong program, and I think everyone has seen phonics deficit, so they have bought out, and like, no rep is calling anyone back at this point. Like, even if you say, I will, I got money to spend, you won't hear from them currently, because I think they're so busy with all the need and all the people that are trying to get the program.
I've reached out to people that I've been dealing with for years, and I've gotten crickets.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Like, I called Texas reps to get me to a Wisconsin rep to not call me back. So we're going to continue looking for that. We do have Reading Horizons in the district, though, so we are going to be using that to help supplement, until we don't have to do it anymore, because that will be a celebration and a day to celebrate. But we can say, we're just going to use inter-reading, and that will be a great resource, because we don't have to fill our gaps that we have.
So is there enough copies of it in the district for all the teachers to have one? Or like, how do they give a lesson like that?
Yeah, so we have a lot of books. We found some in the warehouse, we found some at, the title teachers have some, the intervention. So we are tomorrow on our PD day actually training all the elementary staff on Reading Horizons, and so 4K has really great data, and they've had it consistently. So when people say that it's, we have a lot of poverty in Anago, or whatever the excuse is at that moment, our kids come in really good. Like, our 4K data is looking really good, so we have to maintain that, and one thing they use is 95%. So we, we use it in 4K, and then we just stop it. And so like, if it's really working, why are we not continuing it? And we have some students who enter in kindergarten who don't take our 4K, so we are going to use that 95% in some of our interventions in kindergarten, so that we're really seeing that overlap, so there's a system, and not just a year-by-year kind of, I like this, so I'm going to do it, and I like this, so I'm going to do this, that there's like a sequential plan. So some of those pieces that already are in the district, kindergarten already had it, there's some extra 95% that then we'll use in interventions as well.
So what are you doing for decodables, then? Do they line up with Reading Horizons?
Reading Horizons has some decodables.
So the intervention and title teachers at the elementary will use the decodables. We're going to front-load some tier-one. So a tier-one won't use the decodables. So for example, if I'm a classroom teacher, I'm going to just use the 20-minute phonics where they're writing, like-
The 20 minutes from Reading Horizons or from the HMH?
From Reading Horizons.
Okay. So the tier-one is going to be Reading Horizons?
Yep, and then-
What are we doing right now, then? Not really doing any phonics yet?
Like, currently this year-
Currently, like, before we train?
Oh, they've been using the structured literacy out of inter-reading.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have been getting phonics, we just know we need to bump it up and make sure we're getting some interventions in there.
And how similar are the scope and sequences?
They're pretty similar when I looked at them. Obviously, Reading Horizons has a little bit more intense, it's more intense, they're covering more in each lesson, and it's a little bit more of a system, but they do the short A, like this structured literacy goes through short A, they master it, they move on to the next piece of it. They don't mark it, and that's where-
And that's important, that they have that marking system.
Yeah, so they can take what they're marking then and use it in inter-reading.
Yes.
So this is the part that, right, this is, that's the big distinguishing feature of Reading Horizons, right?
Is the marking and the consistent over the language.
Right, because to me, it looked hard, right? It looked hard, because you have to remember the marks, but you get cognitive overload versus-
But it goes much deeper than most, any phonics program you're going to find that is embedded into any resource. It just is. It's by design, that's just how it is.
And all students can use Reading Horizons markings. So I've used it with students who were in my intellectual disability program, and all of our students could mark the vowel with the X, the blend with the, they called it the upside-down rainbow, the arc, but they could all mark and start seeing those components of the phonics instruction, and be able to apply that then to other words. And that's, that's what we want, is we want the tier-one and the tier-two and tier-three to all be aligned, so that a student's not going to special education class and getting something completely different, and coming back to Gen Ed and having no idea how to apply it. So we want to make sure that that system is very clear for our students.
So and how long is the, is the lesson 20 minutes? Like, is it still two letters a week, kind of, or is it slower than that when it's more in-depth?
So you can do it with 20 minutes a day if you're not doing the decodables. Like, the whole set is the decodables and kind of all that. That would take probably 35, 40 minutes if you wanted to run through all that, but tier-one, your classroom teachers can just do the 20 minutes of the throwing of the words, the kids write and mark it on their whiteboard, there's a fun eraser game that they love. But that's where they're practicing those skills for those 20 minutes of intensive. Then if they are getting an intervention in it, that is where they then go through the decodables and do it at more of an intense level.
Okay, but I bet, so just in general, though, so same letter, short A, two days in a row, or several days in a row?
Yeah, several days.
Or would you have to look on that?
Well, and what's really great about Reading Horizons is it's not a program where, like, you have to pace it. So if your students, like, if you, I don't know, something happens, you're like, oh, we have to stop for the day, you just put a post-it, and then you pick up right there the next day. So it's not like if you don't finish the lesson, oh my gosh, I didn't finish it, now I have to go back and redo it. It's a system that can kind of just keep going, which is really nice. Or if you're saying, hey, we finished short A, and I got a big chunk of kids that can't do it yet, I'm going to go back and do that lesson again. So it's easily able to spiral like that, or I'm going to pull those kids in a small group and make sure that I really have that mastered.
I'll also mention, too, that in conversation, the conversation we had prior, I think it's really, it was powerful when you shared, scores don't reflect the teacher. Looking at the data effectively, because you might likely have a really strong teacher, and they're teaching high quality across all these domains, and that's why your scores are low, because there's mastery. So let's hone in on where the needs are, and the data, hopeful for intentional data and utilizing it, so that way we do see the results, because then it's purposeful, too, and it makes sense, so we can see.
And if you're just pulling things, you could be a super-strong veteran teacher, but if you're piecemealing something together, like I said, your data isn't going to look as strong as your instruction is.
Yep.
How are they feeling about the background knowledge that the program is providing? That was one of our biggest, like, hey, does it have good background knowledge, or are there too many strategy instruction that's not as effective?
Right now, they feel really good about it, being a month in, from the teams that I've talked to, they, they feel good about the level of rigor, like I said, in the text. They're, they're trying to figure out pacing of it, so like, one teacher said, well, I read the story for an hour, and I was like, so in five minutes, though, where are your students, like, everywhere? Okay, we got to look at that. The story is good, but you could have it read to them and be pulling small groups, right? So just some of that, like, implementation process of it, but they said this, kids really like the stories, they're relatable, they're, they're good leveled for our students to be pushed, for our high students as well, so they do feel really good about that.
In the phonemic awareness, is it, are we still kind of doing it? In the, you said we'd bring it up to the kindergartners who didn't get it in 4K.
Yep.
But what about the first and second graders? Does that come in at Reading Horizons? Or is this, right, because we do call phonemic awareness, somehow we're just trying to become aware of the letter sounds.
Yeah, and the hearing of it.
Hearing them.
And the listening of it.
Hearing them at the same time you see them, or just hearing them?
Hearing them, so like phonemic awareness, if I said, I'm going to give you a phonemic awareness lesson, so if I said, the word is bat, and you're going to change the B to a C, what sound, what letter, or what word do you have, you'd say cat. So hearing that, you can interchange letters, the initial sound and the end sound, or switching the vowel sound, that's all phonemic awareness that kids need to have an understanding without sampling the visual aspect of it, they need to hear those sounds and be able to flip those sounds by memory, by in their head as they think about it. Does that make sense? So like, 4KK1 are going to work phonemic awareness, we're going to infuse phonics into that, and then second and third grade will do phonics and fluency.
Okay.
So kind of like a system approach.
But if they need phonemic awareness, they will get it during one time.
Okay, so talk-
To catch, close that gap.
Okay, so our reading block is two hours plus WIN time, or is it like?
It should be 120 minutes, based on the schedule. Scheduling is very difficult when you share specials between three buildings, so it cuts in some of the time that we wish we had. So ideally, 120 minutes of ELA, and then 45 minutes of WIN.
Okay, so 120, and 20 of that is phonics.
Yep.
And the rest is?
The, the reading, yep, the stories, the writing component, the vocabulary.
Do we mostly do it in the mornings, or is it kind of different?
It's kind of at all different times of the day, based on the schedules right now. I mean, you try to keep it away from the end of the day as kids get squirrely, but...
Sometimes it's impossible. It would be nice to be able to get to a place where we can have all of the title teachers pushing in, eventually having speech language pushing into those earlier grades to run some of those ORC groups, but it takes time to get there, but it can be done.
And your small groups, are they staying pretty constant throughout the year, once you set them?
Once, they're set right now. Yep, and they're starting on the fourth. So after the training, and a lot of people that I talked to at the elementary, they were like, oh man, I wish you would just bring Reading Horizons back, because they have a background in it based on working at North. So a lot of them already have that understanding about it, so it's not going to be that much of a training for them, but they'll start on the fourth, and then when you look at your RTI cycle, you want to make sure you have six to eight weeks of good data. Now, you wouldn't let a child sit there if you're progress monitoring every week and you're seeing it, like, go down or, or stay constant, you want to look at that and say, okay, after this many weeks, we're going to do something else, because this is obviously not working. But you want that six-to-eight week worth of a cycle to make sure that that intervention is working, which will get us to the winter benchmark, and then we reassess. Kids can be fluid in these groups, like, we had a student in first grade that test did not accurately reflect who she was in the classroom, and that student has moved up into a higher group, because we don't ever want to put a child at a group that is not at their level, based on one snapshot of a assessment. So we have, we have those conversations as well. Or if a kid does really well, and it was just a summer slide, and suddenly we notice them do really well, we're going to move that child out and into another group at a higher level.
Doesn't mean they have to stay there for six weeks.
But there might be some students who do stay there for six weeks, because that intervention is working.
Okay, so the teachers are sort of happy with what they bought so far, so that's- Okay, so the teachers are sort of happy with what they bought so far, so that's?
Yeah.
Good.
And then my perspectives, I should add on to that, for the sixth through 12th grade, we had a really great trainer come in at the beginning of the year and help with that. She was wonderful. And we're hoping to get her back. I talked to a few of the high school teachers, they really enjoyed the program. It's going well at sixth and seventh grade as well. The level of rigor is really high, the context the kids seem to really like. I know I was just talking to the high school 11th grade English teacher, and he's starting the Declaration of Independence next week and having some critical thinking and really said positive things about the program. So my perspectives is going well as well.
Anything else? Any other questions right now?
I just have one. I can't even help myself, I know.
If you just didn't say that when you started, then we just. Just like me, Asia, I don't ever say, I just have one.
One question, then we're moving on.
When you said that they're starting the, the Constitution, right?
Yeah.
Do they cover the Magna Carta portion of that at all?
I don't know.
Well, because that's like in 1500 or something, you know, so it's kind of like a.
I have not read the whole my perspectives book, so I'm not sure.
You're right, however, that gives the context of how.
And I'm not sure if like the scope and sequence of all the years, like on my perspectives. So usually it spirals. So like a concept they learn in a previous grade, when they get to the next grade, it's like they build background knowledge, so they can apply it.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if they're seeing that this year, since eighth through 12th grade, this is their second year of implementation of it. They should be seeing better background knowledge from the year before, as they move into this year.
It just gives a really good context of how things came to be throughout history and why the Constitution is written the way it is, and how they had the foresight to write all this stuff. You know, it just gives that, that background knowledge.
Background knowledge.
Yeah, which is huge, especially in today's world.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all.
All right, moving on to people services and Sped. Letter A, medical advisor agreement.
So the attachment is the typical agreement that is signed each year. This is just information only to let you know that it is Dr. McKenna has volunteered his services and just as an FYI to the board to let you all know that.
In the past, there has been questions on if anybody else has been interested. In the past, it's been known, we are appreciative to Dr. McKenna. So I'm gonna ask the question this year too, just, just to ensure, was there anybody else interested?
No, there was not.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKenna, again.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, special education transition update.
Yeah, so I'll give you a little background and I'll have Michelle Ireland come down and explain PowerPoint. It's an update on one of our indicators, indicator 14, I don't know why it's labeled 14. Helps us describe the further education and competitive employment experiences of youth with disabilities as they transition from high school to adult life. There's surveys and Michelle does a really good job of getting a lot, a high percentage of our surveys completed. And they assess the outcomes of individuals with disabilities one year after they have exited high school. And it is a yearly requirement from PPI at this time of the year. This is more just about information and Michelle's gonna share.
Her presentation. Nobody wants to turn around and look at that.
You're an important player.
Because we get some money back, I don't, we don't know what it is yet. We'll have to wait when that comes through to let you know, because it's pretty.
Did everybody get their PowerPoint?
They should, yeah.
Okay. So as I, I'll just step through the PowerPoint, I put it up there last year, but that's okay. She explained our indicator 14, that's where we got our van a couple of years back. Fortunately, we actually are hoping for another van that we can put in for this year and/or garage, which I don't think we're good at here, but he volunteered to build us a garage last year, because when the winter comes and it's really hard to scrape off the ice going in and out of the community, two and three tents a day. This year, I completed 30 surveys. Five of them were unsuccessful, which means I couldn't, none of the teachers could help. These kids fell off the face of the earth, nobody knows where they are, where they ended up. So I had to count five of them totally unsuccessful, which 25 of them are successful. St. Norbert's typically, up until like three years ago, they always did our, our surveys for us and the outcomes were just not as good. But I like to do the outcomes, because I wanna know. It's really intriguing. I talk on average of five to 20 minutes per family that I talk to, because they let me know, what did they like, what did they wanna see changes at school, what can help the kids? So that's kind of cool. I say 25 of them successful, that means I was able to complete 25 of them by talking to the students, the parents, the guardian, somebody that knows the family. Successful, I don't know. Typically, the state comes back with a thousand dollars per successful survey. I would love to say I got 25 of them, but I don't think that's gonna be possible. That would be phenomenal if that's the case. So that's why I do it all in the house. On average, I get, I wanna say, I said 12 to 15. Typically, I think 18, I think is the highest I've ever had. And that's thousands of dollars back, because you get a thousand, roughly a thousand dollars per pupil. The workforce data, I looked everywhere for this year's data, because it comes out, you know, the year before. And I have not sat in a meeting, but our 2021 data states that we are definitely in the dark in the state. So we are doing some great things as far as transition goes compared to other areas in the state. And of course, Langley County also includes Elko, White Lake, not Bowler, but I include Bowler in a lot of what I do. But White Lake also is coming in and we partnered with them, or they partnered with us, I should say, for Goodwill. And they also partnered with us for the NTC class that we've built, two NTC class this year, we're working on a detailing class to add to that. But that partnership also helps those students, all of Langley County, so it includes White Lake.
The culinary class?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. The culinary class was, has been, we work with Chef John over there. They go over there, I think I might even have a picture, maybe I don't, involved in it with, we work at NTC, they have a makeshift culinary class, they use the chemistry lab. And then three times, they get to go over and they get to work in the kitchen, they get a weight on people. Like I've actually been over there at an NTC meeting where we went in the spoons and they fed us. So it was really cool that it was our own students that were actually feeding us. So that was kind of cool from that perspective. Goodwill has definitely grown. We do a morning and an afternoon session. This year's new that Bowler has joined us in our mix where they come in and I figured if we're already doing a program, why not add as many to the possibilities in the realm as possible? So that's been really cool. Goodwill has supplied us with uniforms. We make the kids, we have a makeshift house, it's a classroom and it's all we could afford at this point. But we have a bed in there and a uniform, a sink for the kids to clean their fingernails, make sure their teeth are clean, dressed appropriately. We've really added, we have two kids that have been showering in school, because they, one girl is so thankful, we took her on a field trip last week, that she didn't have to be teased, because we could let her shower downstairs, although we got a flood. But we've done it, we're working through with maintenance on that issue. They give us, the tech gives us NTC background knowledge for our customer care class. So kids that are in Goodwill get to come forward and because they work so many hours, NTC gives them the background for customer care and it adds to a classroom that they also build for us the second semester of the year. Lot, lot of different responsibilities at that works site. We talk about technology. It has really been a lot of hiccup for us, because we struggle with clocking in electronically and verifying your time card. You wanna talk about a nightmare? But Goodwill HR has been phenomenal. I have Brian, who's the guy on speed dial. Every other week, we have to verify those time cards and check in. And when kids don't, we talk to them, but we still help them out with that. There's a lot of constructive criticism that go through or goes through that group, but that's okay, it's all learning. I think I talked about our partnerships. The other partnership we have with Elko, White Lake and Bowler is we're holding an amazing race this October 17th. So we're gonna have a whole crew, we're gonna be all over town. We're probably six vehicles for sure, splitting up in the town and as we split up, we're gonna go through Antioch and let people know that students with disabilities are gonna be here forever. And they're great workers to have, it just might take them a little bit longer to learn, but they're definitely an asset to your place. So that's coming up in October here. Where we are now, I already said, we have two groups there. We also have built a wet backpack with the partnership of the hospital. We got a room out at the food pantry that they created, just that we can be our space where we go in and we, the kids learn how to, you know, we got a whole stack of food here, how do we break it down into different, do we get enough? What's the vegetables, how does it work? To counting it out, separating it, to filling the bags as we go through, like this week's 310 bags that they'll be filling and delivers them to the schools and the students get their backpacks that way. We've added a functional math class, because we felt like we became, I don't wanna say dumping ground, because that wasn't the case at all, but we were working with them and some days we felt like we were just rushing through, we weren't teaching. So now we have a classroom component where we're actually teaching that in the classroom, then the kids get to go out and experience it through the situation.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to Webb, because what you did is incredible, exceptional. So.
Thank you.
It's, our students in the district benefit from that, not just the students that you're working with and taking there, but all of them involved, enrolled in the weekend backpack program. Because there were so many components on the backend for the food pantry and you guys having to bring the items out and then put them back in between, coming back and forth to get your own space. I know the tech department was involved with the shelves.
That's the next thing, yes. Justin, actually, we took kids in the van out there, they measured it up for a class project, they built it, then we had to get the shelves that were built back out there and it was, like I said, the tech was involved, that's a good point. Thank you.
I was in a meeting with Webb presenting the other week and they sang the district's praises and yours, Michelle, specifically for what you did and just the process flow and the experience that those students are getting. So it's really important, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a win-win for everybody, so that's what's really exciting about that.
I was at a CISA training, I told you that, didn't I?
The what?
When I was at my CISA training for a director's meeting, they called out Michelle Ireland.
Oh, did they?
Oh, you were, I didn't do that. Okay, I thought I did it. You're in Antioch, she does a great job of doing the surveys, great job of doing that program. You don't have to train anyone, she will train you.
Very nice. I could be good, I'm bad.
Probably said you have Michelle Ireland, so.
So then the other thing we're doing is we're doing a coffee cart right now. Tracy Bush has really taken the lead on that. We started a unified class probably four or five years ago. Now we're working toward a unified class that way, which a unified class is combining students with disabilities with students without disabilities. And we, her baking and pastries class is taking the lead. The kids have punch cards, they're learning how to deliver coffee Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then teachers have really embellished it. Somebody told me the other day that that's the highlight of their day, waiting for these kids to come in. And like right now, we're partnering with Brown Mug, they're getting us coffee, so we're gonna get a whole bunch of coffee from Brown Mug, then we're hoping to hit Woken Bear, we're hoping to hit and feature certain coffees. Like right now, we're featuring Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, because they can buy that in the store. So then we're collaborating with them. Once they get the routine, once we get in our system, because we're learning money and stuff in that classroom, again, another partnership with Pat's class, then we're going to go in and start baking with them. So it's a process, but it just can't happen right away. So that's really cool and the kids are loving it.
It's very cool. I've been in the hallways with the coffee delivery and it is really neat.
And Mike Porizik is making our coffee cart, it's like 99% done apparently. We need two holes or something yet that have to set the. Perfect. And ironically, we are, we can't even keep up on the coffee, it's been very successful. So we've been delivering into the next hour. So we have little nooks and crannies we have to fill out, but that's another job skill that we're using right within.
This is a very important question. How hot is the coffee when you deliver it? Because personally, personally, I hate it when it's too hot and you can't drink it.
Why don't you come on the Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
That's right. But you can, we do it your own mug, your own mug. So those that like it open and not so hot, we'll fill that. Or we have a, however the kid, we do, we deliver in three different ways. One's your own mug, one's your own bigger mug, or our cup that we give you. So it's as hot as what comes out of the brewer, it's what's very personal.
So it's very hot.
Yes, and we don't, because we don't even let our kids deliver it with the open mug right now.
I just finished Elon Musk's biography, he always microwaves his coffee after it's made, so he can't drink it too fast, because then he consistently burns his mouth. And I thought.
See, and I like it that hot myself, so it'll cool down really fast. Coffee cools down too fast for me, so.
It's just a neat partnership and it's in-house and it's really, the energy surrounding that, I've been around when there's like, don't know where my punch card is, or you know, like the little things to work out and it's still a really positive observation.
Well, and it's growing such self-esteem for some of our students that normally don't even wanna walk in a classroom, they're like, oh, do you have your punch card? Let me punch it, you know? Two dollars, it's a dollar or two dollars. And then Thursdays is our pastry day, Tuesdays is just coffee, but Thursday you can get coffee or pastry. And her students are doing the Google Doc as part of their learning and their assignments, so they have to gather all their data before we make the coffee and brew it. So like I said, it's a really a win-win for everybody involved, because we don't always get, like we have some students that I struggle with wanting to even put them in the community, because I don't wanna burn a bridge and they don't want them not to come again. So this is a good avenue to start building that, so I can get them into the community. And they don't want the community attendance, hygiene, there's a lot of different reasons. So we're really slowly working through some of those things, so it's kind of cool. With that, it's our passage program, which is programs to assist students that's shifting to adult goals in education. We came up with that saying not two years ago, we got a pamphlet, we got a flyer going, all of the things I pretty much talked about. The other thing with that is we partner with DVR and students in two different locations. Tara Nicholson normally works with DVR, so I have two students that are working with Tara through DVR and through me. So I have two kids that leave here at 12:30. Ones they leave here, one is actually going to the healthcare center right now, the other is working on a different job experience. We've had him at Dairy Queen, we've had him at Colvers, and she takes over for the afternoon portion, because we want students to, the 18 to 21 is not like coming in for a normal school. They are graduate, they are moving on in their life, and we want them to feel that way, therefore they have a different schedule of what we do. So that's how they're operating on a different schedule. Picture of our wet backpack, how we started out with our building there. Kids painted it, kids started from scratch. I know I keep, seemed to be going back and forth a little bit, but sorry about that. But there's a picture of them painting it. Our custodians gave us the paint, so we were able to do that. It's our own space, it's, it's an awesome setup on what we have there. And then paid partnerships in our community that we've had in the past, we've had Fuller Auto Sales and Service, the school district, I am able to employ student workers at East, West, North Middle School and High School. Currently, I only have one at the high school, because I don't have students interested in working yet to do the other positions. Students at Pick and Save, I've had a student at Pick and Save now for at least four years, he's a graduate, he's still working at Pick and Save, that's what he's doing. We have our NTC mentorship. I was able to get a student enrolled and they paid him $15 an hour to come out there from five o'clock, three days a week. He worked as a mentor to, I forgot the guy's name, it wasn't Darren, or it wasn't the wild that died, the guy that went right after him. And we got him all set up, he worked for three weeks and then he quit. But it was a partnership that they offered and we talk about transportation, that young man's mom charged him $10 a day to take him to work, so therefore he decided it wasn't feasible for him to go to work. So I have on my CCOT every week, we're talking about transportation, how could we get that going in Antioch area? Inspirus, I've had a young lady that thought she wanted to work with older people, so we put her at Rosalia Garden, she delivered food, got the tables ready for that group, Goodwill, and that's just a couple of them as we go, because I have hurricane and whatnot. So is there any other question?
I'm not gonna say it, I'm just gonna ask. When you, when students leave and they go out to work, like say in the afternoon or the mornings, like you said, does somebody have to go with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes and no. Like if I, I have been a job coach with a student that we started him at four o'clock in the afternoon and I went through his in-service, I did everything with him. And then he was able to venture to the school day and he didn't need those supports anymore.
Okay.
So the goal is, well, like when we're going to Goodwill, when we're going to the food pantry, they have job coaches the whole time. They really need a lot of, I don't wanna say handholding, but they need a lot of learning as they go. When I have work experiences like Johnson Coyle, I got a young man, or not Johnson Coyle, Fuller's Auto Sale and Service, we had a student there that we couldn't even get to come to school, all he wanted to do was fix motors, he was in trouble with the juvenile system, I was buried up front with the Fuller guy, and he's like, I did YA when I was in school, I wanna help somebody else. And this kid was out there, I wanna say for like eight months, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but he was out there for like eight months. And they gave him his equipment, they gave him everything and he was one of them. So it's, you know, everyone's unique in themselves. I didn't have to show up to help him anything, the whole kicker with him was just get to work.
Okay. So when you, so when, when they, when they have the coaches with, then how does that work with covering students back at, you know, whatever school or, you know what I'm saying? How does, how does that all?
Very strategically.
Okay.
There's, there's a team of, typically we have six instructional assistants downstairs with a group of 18 kids.
Okay.
So sometimes I go, sometimes Pat, the other classroom teacher goes, that we're piggybacking, always an instructional assistant, sometimes two instructional assistants, sometimes we're back here working and they go. We do have a lead, like Tammy Maticecki is my lead at Goodwill, she's been out there for two plus years now. I feel confident, I even told her, I said, I'm not even scheduled to go out there this week, Tammy, I actually told her that today. So I'm not going out there, but we also have like a one-on-one or one-on-two. So Tammy and another instructional assistant go in the morning. Then in the afternoon, it's Antioch, we take the lead. White Lake brings in their driver, which is an instructional assistant and works with two or three kids. And Bowler brings in two or three kids also and they have it. So the three of them collaborate on, because we do classroom instruction out there one day a week, and then on the floor training the rest.
Okay.
So when we do our wet backpack, I have one girl taking the lead now, it was, she was my lead when we started, she left the district, somebody else took the lead, but She left the district. Somebody else took the lead, but that person's also a classroom teacher and can't go at that time. So I'm back to that gal that takes the lead. So Monday or Friday, her and I both went out to get everything situated with a group of four kids. Today, she went with three kids.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
So it all depends on who are the students going and where the needs are.
Sure.
We gather that information daily.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate you explaining like, because I was like, how does that like work?
It is very strategic. It truly is. It's not like nothing's cut and dry. We don't know what we're getting every day when we show up for work.
Well, and you mentioned, and it's not necessarily this conversation, but you mentioned it in a potentially getting a second van. And a big part of that is that strategic planning and staffing and number of students and.
And that's where we struggle. Like we take less to Goodwill in the afternoon because we have our class fifth and sixth hour now. So we need the van to take more kids to drop off at Goodwill and then come back. And I'm waiting on license for one girl right now that we, because we go through the district to make sure we're, we all have to sign off and do all that through the district as well. So sure, everybody that's in the van has to have their credentials.
Okay.
So.
And with the backpack program, where, like, how do we get all the backpacks? Like, is it?
Well, before COVID, they were true backpacks. Now they're bags, envolmbag, but don't it's, knock on wood, all of them for us. Because we do give them like full things of applesauce sometimes. I meet monthly with some hospital workers. They do the grant work for that. They are just so happy I'm taking over my end of it and they are busy doing all the grant work.
So when you say bag, is it, is it like an actual bag or is it?
It's an actual bag. It doesn't stand out like any, I mean, those that know, they know it's wet backpack. But envolmbag has envolm on it. Right now, we've done in the past, we've done lakeside bags. The bags just are not as heavy. So.
They've done, it's all been very strategic and web through the hospital takes the lead and all of that.
Okay. But they're, and they're different. So like you would not, I don't know how to say that.
It's discreet.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
And when we, when we have expired food, we also take and we created a pantry here where not even necessarily all the expired food, they've allowed me, last year we had a pantry here, tomorrow we have a meeting. I'm sure we're going to be discussing it. We just need a space because we used to handle it through Carla Wisprockers room and we had shelves. So when kids were hungry, they would come in. Tina Verhagen had a desk that I always filled. I would get boxes that were close to expiration date because FDA says you can hold this six months after. You know, we have all this formula out there that we follow. And I take them and I fill them in. The hospital even gives me the little bags and other job skill. Kids take bags and refill different bags. I mean, we, we try to do everything for job skills right around our building. And then we share that out with the guidance down in the office. Darlene Johnson takes them from the nurse. And we have a different pantry that way.
Okay.
And they'll do delivery for us and everything. So it's all through the web of backpack. But yet there are kids, even though they still get free breakfast and free lunch, some of them don't get here in time, whatever, they're still hungry. So.
Okay. Thank you. You're doing great. Great work.
Thank you. I love this part of Jeff.
Can't tell at all.
It's my favorite.
Is that educator for you? Are you required to do the surveys? Do those things?
Getting the job skills and getting everybody ready is, that's definitely a passion. And a need. For sure, it is a need because we try to get kids to come. A lot of times I have more jobs than I have workers. Like right now, I can put beginning students, custodians in buildings to work a lot more independently and I don't know if these students.
I was a principal at West, just had some kids.
And West was the one, it was the easiest because the kids could walk right there versus some busing and other transportation. Because there are several factors. So. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Or your octagon or whatever shape it is.
It's gonna be like the going choke now.
We'll move on to child count update.
Yeah, so just more information. It's a little early to have, the child count was just only weekend. It's a little early to have everything updated. But what it is, is the October first child count is about students that must be receiving special education services under an active IEP or an ISP. IEP is public school, ISP is private. And the student must be signed to validate for his or hers to be included. So they must have been included in our third Friday count already and have an IEP. Their IEP must be active, current effective dates will be used to determine enrollment in the case of overlapping records. And additionally, the student must be between the ages of three to twenty-one. So right now, including students four K through twelve, including in our private school, we have three hundred and fifty-seven students accounted for. If we take private school students out, we are servicing right now three hundred and twenty-eight students in our Antigo schools, four K through twelve.
Say that again, three fifty-four?
Three fifty-seven includes our students enrolled in the private school, three hundred and twenty-eight. If we pull out the private school students.
So when we pull up private school, are you saying pulling out four K or all?
All, most of them are four K. Well, not, I shouldn't say that, but all, all.
Okay.
We have some seven-three or some six-three that are pulled.
Okay. Sorry.
And that number will change because we also have students who are going through initial evaluations. They don't have an active IEP yet because we're going through that process to determine if they qualify. So that number I anticipate will increase as the year progresses.
Do parents usually want their kid to have an IEP or not really?
I can't say through my experiences being a teacher, being a principal, or now a miss role, that I could say either way. It really is about that conversation that you have with parents. Like what does your two-way relationship look like? What? I've never had parents, I can't say, I think I've had maybe one parent over my twenty years, nineteen years say no. It's really different, JD. I don't, I can't say either way.
I'll ask you again next year.
I think parents want an IEP in the capacity of feeling as though there's an unmet need that an IEP will meet.
Yeah.
So it's really important and I can speak for Kelly or her staff, but the conversations leading up to that are really helping a parent identify what an IEP would provide that's not already in place because many times, it wouldn't necessarily, tell me if I'm wrong, an IEP wouldn't necessarily provide more, so to speak, it is. But maybe what's already being done is sufficient and we, not to.
They may not qualify through testing, you know? So I think the biggest thing I want to say is that relationship, like what relationship do you have as an educator with parents and that two-way communication? So are you looking for opportunities of, hey, this is when you can come in and I'll tell you about your child the whole, two times a year? Or do you have some sort of expectation maybe from your building principal? Which I had and then when I became a principal, I passed it on, was you should be contacting every parent at least once a month, right? There should be some sort of two-way communication at least once a month with every child. How, how is your child doing and not just when there is something not going well? There should be some sort of system leading into Amy's conversation or looking at that data and saying, hey, wait a minute. At the top of that, there is some forward data that said, we don't have a lot of our students without IEPs. Scoring advanced or proficient. So is our guaranteed and viable curriculum, is our tier one effective for many? Effective for all? So just having a lot of those conversations.
I know some of the feedback that I've gotten from various people is that like their child is studying or struggling, you know, and they're reaching out to the teacher and then they're kind of like sent, directed over to, you know, a school counselor. And it, but it doesn't, somewhere in the communication gets lost. There's a disconnect. So that, like, they're trying to get their, their kid help, but they're not really getting anywhere. And they're like, I don't even know who else to call. So I think, you know, I know I've said this in the past. I think it'd be really important to put up like on our website, somewhere really easy for people to find. Kind of like, I know, I know.
One thing is the other services too. Like a lot of times, parents don't always know all the services and the supports that are in place. So we send home with the Fastbridge data this year to families. If your child's receiving a tiered service, a tier two or a tier three, not special ed because that's our right, a referred and a qualification. But then we stapled it right to that so they can look at their scores and see what we're doing because of it.
Okay.
Because your student is struggling in reading, here's a letter from the teacher that is scripted and says, your child's receiving a tier two instruction in reading. And then that's a way that that can start the conversation too at conferences that come up. Remember the sheet that you got? Here we're doing phonemic awareness or here we're doing phonics. This is your child's progress monitoring. We do it every week. Look at the growth that they're making. That's all I think parents want to know is that someone is there helping their child and they're seeing results. And sometimes the only thing they know is like, I've heard about an IEP. My kid needs one because I just want to help my kids so much. When there's so many other supports that your child is getting if we're communicating in the right way. All those supports that are in place.
That was much better said than what I was. Thank you. So are we, this seems like a high number of students in relation to total students. Are we in the, okay.
In regards to the state, so our district and two other districts that are within a drive are roughly seventeen percent of our students.
Okay.
And the state average is fourteen point six or fourteen point eight. So I actually just dug into that data.
And I've known districts to have up to twenty-some percent in special ed populations.
Actually, three districts around us in us are right tight, seventeen, seventeen point one, sixteen point nine. And like I said, the state average is almost fifteen percent.
Okay. Does the state penalize us for, for that, for the number of IEPs or anything like that?
No, what the state does look at is it looks at how are students with IEPs, where are they being serviced? How, how many minutes or what percent of their day is serviced in the reg at Gen Ed classroom? We want to aim for that eighty percent. If not, what's the trajectory to get there? They also look at how they're performing on the forward ACT, Inspire, DLM, all the different assessments as well. They look at ELLA proficiency for students with IEPs. They'll get math proficiency. They look at an educational environment, I mentioned. So a lot of those pieces are, when I dug into our district data, it aligns right with, right with what that sort of is doing. Okay, so we have our kids according to that data in the Gen Ed classroom anywhere from sixty-eight to eighty percent of the time. Okay, so then they are, why are they not performing well in relationship to other students with IEPs? We're actually performing in the lowest percentile, meaning out of all the kids in this, the lowest ten percent of students in the state with IEPs, students at Antigo High School are performing in the lowest ten percent of those students. So great. And I'm so happy that we are on this team together because hmm, it starts with this. It starts with that core, that educational environment. So when all students are accessing a high-quality core, what is happening in those classrooms to allow students to show that they know in different ways, to grasp the material in different ways? How long is it? Is it all teach and preach, right? So how are we delivering that content? And I know from being here, six years ago, we were involved in some UDL training, some great practices. So I'm just very curious, moving forward to see like what those look like in our classrooms across the district.
I'm, I'm curious, like, so go back years ago when not, not all the kids were in the regular classrooms. What was the, the outcome of that style of education?
You get identified, you get letters.
Right. But like, like you were just talking about that significant gap.
Yeah, because they were never exposed to grade level instruction ever.
Okay.
So you never want to pull a student, no matter what they're identified, whatever label, out of the core. And that's one thing we talk about is even if we're struggling, you still have to attend to grade level text. Otherwise, I am just creating that opportunity gap. If I have a student who's reading at first grade and fourth grade and I keep them on first grade stuff, that gap gets larger for that child. Yeah, we might have gotten over first grade stuff, but the rest of your class has moved on to fifth grade and now that gap is, has increased. So you always want to make sure they are attending to core instruction at that grade level and getting the supplemental, and getting the intervention piece.
When, when they can. So if a, if a student is not regulated, then they don't want to be in there either. I mean, when they can regulate themselves and attend, that's the expectation.
Okay. Yeah. That was something like, I've been asked and I wondered, so thank you for explaining that.
Okay. I'll move on to get kids a head grant.
Get kids a head grant. Yeah, so really, I'm in the sunset of it. It's a previous grant where funds are dispersed to meet the mental health needs of youth in our school community. The collaborative effort between staff, families, youth and community partners helps to support students to reach their full potential. This is meaningful, timely, necessary work. The funds, well, that's my typo, fines. The funds for this grant have previously been paid out to the school district and the grant sunsets in December of 2024. So just to inform us, we received two installments. In twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we received an installment of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. And last year, we received another installment for the same amount, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. And what that means is there's very specific guidelines of what the grant can be spent on. So the funding can be used to train staff in mental health-related programs and initiatives, including youth, mental health first aid, compassion resilience, social, emotional learning, trauma-sensitive schools. And we can train them in mental health evidence-based improvement strategies, mental health literacy stigma. So DPI gives you a list of what you can. It's all about training. It's all about training. We are not allowed to pay for direct treatment services of students or staff, insurance deductibles, non-mental health related training, staff salaries or stipends for non-mental health-related trainings or positions, and indirect costs of regular school operations, like existing overhead expenses. So it does sunset. I, Glenda sent me an email and I got one too after we had sent it for another grant that I'm going to try to write. I'm working with DPI. And hopefully I can get it done and we can get funds. So it's something very similar to replace this moving forward. So hoping, knock on wood.
So we used some or all for the mental health navigator position, correct?
Some was for the mental health navigator position. A lot of the responsive classroom, the circle circles training, a lot of the Madeline Conrad. I know between this and the school-based mental health grants, things like our seven mindset curriculum was paid for, pieces like that. So that's what's been used for in the past. And then moving forward, there's like AODA training that some of the school counselors will go to. Another training we'll talk about tomorrow. I said, yeah, well, the grant funds are there. I believe last check, there's twenty-nine thousand that I paid a couple of mental health trades. Other than that, so we're probably down to about twenty thousand.
And it's train, not treat then. So they're going to learn about risk factors, red flags, indicators, but they're not treating.
No.
So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Helpful. Look at theirs. Well, I, some staff feel uncomfortable, not, it wasn't a conversation here, but in general of like, what's my role? Like I got into education to teach. There's all this mental health stuff which is needed. But then some apprehension, liability, parents too, what are the boundaries? So I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
Share, make sure that's clear. Yeah, that we're not, our staff aren't going to treat, they're not going to diagnose. But it is to be able to see those red flags and then know how to utilize what's available internally and externally for referrals and things.
What about counseling? Like you said, we're not treating, right? But if they're being trained on it, like are, like what about the counseling side of that? Like so if it comes to a problem, like what part of that are they, like how far do they take that, right?
That's a great question. So school-based counseling is not therapeutic counseling. So there's very different guidelines as far as, for instance, if I make a threat to harm myself for others, we follow the process that Jake shared tonight or the counselors follow the process. Is the expert?
But like teachers aren't, aren't being trained to like probe.
Counsel.
Like almost, I mean, like how was your weekend? You know, why are you look so tired? Stuff like that. You know, probing into find, trying to find stuff and then trying to counsel the student. That's not happening.
They should not.
Okay.
It should not be happening. I mean, I can see a teacher just out of genuine concern saying, you look really tired. Are you okay?
Yeah.
You know, a check in with the student.
But then if a child says something, then let me go get you some help. You pass that off to the right resource. You don't sit in there with the child.
Okay.
They might be, they might be able to, the staff can get trained to assess a suicidal or homicidal student. To the, but then it's still that passing off. So even if they complete an assessment, depending on those results, it's still, yeah. They probably screen or whatever, they're still going to pass it off. So.
Okay.
It does seem gray, but it's relatively well-defined.
It is. And it should only be like school counseling, social.
Okay. Cause I, I don't know about you, but I've heard feedback from families saying the teachers are trying to get into our family business. It's none of their business what's going on. You know what I mean? And, you know, just kind of probing and looking for stuff. And, and it was kind of upsetting them because they're like, you know, why are you trying to get it all up in our business? You know?
Sometimes the kids say that, even if you say hello.
Yeah.
Also, good morning. Yes. But then the kid will say, they raised me all these questions. You're like, I just said, how are you? I said to everyone else.
Right. No, fair point. Yeah. 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 I'm just sharing what like I've heard from other parents. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think teachers want to do that either.
I don't think so.
The teachers want to teach and they want to be in the classroom and they want to get kids help if they do need it because they obviously care about the kids. But I don't know if I have met a teacher who's like, you know what I want to do? Counsel a kid. Like they're like, we're here to educate and there's other people who do get the support that that child needs, but.
And if so, encourage them to reach out to the teacher and just say, this is what so-and-so said when they came home from school.
Yep.
Can you tell me more about that?
Yes. Have conversations and that communication because I think too, and I have a hundred percent heard it's an overstep in things like. it's an overstep and things like that. But we have these grants and we have a school-based mental health focus that we did not have so strongly in the past. And so that's the other component where now there's more talk about initiatives or trainings or responsive classrooms or there's, there's more language and approaches that are being used that then what makes it, what blurs the role. But it doesn't, it presents as the role is blurred a little bit more, but it's not.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought up the responsive classrooms because are we going to have, or have we already, are we, are the students going to be filling out the questionnaires like they have in the past that ask about everything from, do you come from a divorced home? Do you, do have your parents yelled at you, stuff like?
YRBS.
Risk behavior assessment.
Yes. Because as a parent, I take that as being too intrusive. Like, it's not.
Right. We do, but it also gets recorded out to the state. So it's like housed in a very secured area of the Wisconsin DPI. But we get results from the YRBS survey.
We would not know.
No, personally. It doesn't identify who it gives you overall data.
Okay. Is that because we're listed as a trauma sensitive school in the pilot program?
It's for all schools. It's a great question. And I, I believe there is an element of that that helps decide for like the school-based mental health grant this year. We're not applying for it. It's no longer competitive. Funds will be allocated. And I believe that is part of, a small part of the formula for some of the state's dispersments to decide who gets what.
Okay.
But like, we would not have access to what any child said. It'd just be a general collection of here's what the scores were for Antigo.
But from the parents' perspective, they're not seeing all that. They're seeing the school sending, you know, this, asking these questions and questions that are none of their business.
Do you know when that would be measured?
I don't know.
Um, I feel like it's done in the winter. But like, so I've seen other districts that will post 70 or 95% of Antigo middle school students say they have never vaped and plan to never vape. You know, as a publication of this is where we are and how we're proactively addressing these things in our district.
Right.
So is it anonymous by the student or does the state?
So this is where.
I remember talking about this, you guys.
Yes.
But I, only vaguely, I remember the unhappiness.
Well, so this is where I want to just ensure that we are still on our agenda topic. And why I ask what it is because I think these are, this is a, this is a strong interest point within our community for our parents. That being said, I was curious on when it's given out because I would say we could look at that on the next agenda to speak to that because I want to make sure we are.
And I'd like to give them, what the parents know that they have an adult opportunity and how do you, how do they adult if they don't want to participate?
How it's used, things like that. So I.
It's a great question. I'm putting this in my calendar, like, I set myself to look at this.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
I do believe communication information helps.
Yeah.
Definitely something that parents are interested in and concerned about, I would say too, in some areas. So I don't want to avoid that discussion, but we'll put it, we'll look to add it probably to next month. So then, I mean, we can move on to educational technology with Read Live.
Okay. So Read Live was purchased in the district last year. There was 138 Big Column seats and each seat is a child. So you can like put one child's name on that program and then take them off and put another child. So the seat is what we purchase. So what we're really trying to do this year is make sure that our, we're ensuring that we're providing an equitable education for all of our students. And what that means is no matter what elementary school you go to, when you filter to the middle school, you've got, you've received a quality education. So what we notice is that different schools do different things. And so if it's great for one group of students, it's great for all of our students. So Read Live was purchased last year. It's a program that works on fluency, repeated readings, modeling, and then some background and vocab content. It's a really awesome program, but only some of our students were getting it. So what we did is just purchase more seats so that we can ensure that all of our second and third graders have access to it. What it can do is you can put the reading component with a phonics spin or the reading component with a comprehension. So we can really push some of those students that have proficiency. And we can work on fluency plus keep adding that phonics piece that we know students are, are struggling with. So we're ensuring that. And then we're using a few of the seats for middle school intervention for students in fourth and fifth grade who are still needing some of those components. So like I said before, we really want a system that we're not just doing something good at one grade level or in one class, and that we're making sure that we're ensuring it for all of our students. So we purchased more seats onto that account so that we can ensure that one school doesn't have all the seats and getting this great opportunity and no one else is. So that we're, we're passing no matter where you live in Antigo, what elementary school you go to. They're all awesome. And we're providing that education.
Is that a one-year purchase?
It is a one-year purchase. Yeah. For those seats.
So it's back to strategic planning and what we're doing.
Yep.
That's the system. That's right. Yes.
Okay.
Guess what?
One question.
Nope, I don't have any.
All right. All right. We can adjourn. 8:13. Next committee meeting will be November 6th. Not to start before 6:15.